...at 7:04. And we're gonna start the May 13th Select Board meeting, which is our first meeting since Annual Town Meeting and the erection. So the first order of business is to reorganize. Any motions on what we want to do as far as reorganization?
Would you be up for it if you were nominated? I know you just came on.
I feel like only just three months is like a warm-up.
Well, in that case, I'll make a motion to nominate Tom as Chair of the Select Board. Get it on the table, anyways?
I'll second that, so we can get it on the table. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Do you wanna discuss?
Well, okay, we can have discussion, sure. No, I'm more than happy to do it. We've made a lot of progress, I hope we can keep that going. Paulette, you're pretty quiet. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Alright, how about... Okay, this is a good time to say that we've got... How many recording devices are you running over there? Two? You're running two, so there's five, six audio and one video recorder in operation tonight.
Six audio, one video?
Yeah, it looks like that. Alright, I'm not recording much of anything. How about Vice Chair?
I'll make a motion to... Let me do the same thing. Paulette, would you consider it if I voted for you for making a motion to... Would you be Vice Chair?
I appreciate that you'd be willing to do it, but this would be your second year, so I think it would be good to swap it around, and have you had a chance?
Yeah, I'm not inclined to wanna do it.
Somebody's fault's not here.
But I think we're in a bind if we don't do something like that.
Yes.
But we went through that bind, you and I, together, and I think I wouldn't make a motion to have a Vice Chair. I mean, I'd rather... We worked through that situation, Paulette and I, we're Vice Chair, and I think it'd be better to not do it personally.
Oh, I think we should have one. I think we should have a Vice Chair. I just think this is your second year, and in all fairness, it's only if Tom's not here.
I agree, you would... It would be foolish not to have something.
That's fine. If Paulette doesn't wanna do it, then I guess I would do it if you two think it's important to have. It's not my desire to do it, but I'll...
I mean, either way, as long as somebody's around to run the meeting, because there are gonna be meetings that I... I admit that, I mean, any one of us can be missing at every time. I hope we're all smart enough to take a vacation once in a while and do those sorts of things.
Fine, so I'd be glad to see someone else nominate or make a motion.
I make a motion to nominate one for Vice Chair?
I'll second that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Alright, reorganization minutes. I gotta say, with a week off, I'd better kinda be retraining again because I didn't radio before I got here, so I'm pretty much...
Any additions or deletions?
I have a question for Ma. Because what I'm understanding and what I'm seeing are different. Can you look at the document list section of the minutes?
Okay.
Is that even on? Huh? Document section. It's a general question. When we talked about including the draft with the penciled or penned-in changes in the minutes, don't they belong in the minutes they belong to?
Yeah, that was my impression.
And it's kind of gotten off-kilter that it's with the minutes of a different day, so they're kind of... You're not putting... I thought they went in a folder that...
No, what's meant to happen is to expedite things instead of doing what we used to do where we saw the final finding, that we would say we make a motion to accept the minutes as amended for that meeting, April... In this case, this is April 29th.
Yep.
And it goes into tonight's, right? Tonight's?
Well, that's the way I've been doing it.
No, maybe not. Yeah, we have to go on to tonight's.
They go until the night that they're approved. But we were trying to make the draft copy with its changes belong to the minutes, so when they got posted, you would see there's a reference to the draft copy with the changes, 'cause we're approving them and she's typing them, and there's no reference in that sort of minutes.
Right, so before looking at April 29th, the last thing we usually do is say, make an attachment on the April 29th to the April 29th meeting.
Right, that was what I understood.
Right, that's exactly right. So you don't have that flip between weeks.
But we haven't been doing that. We've not noticed that it's going in a different way.
They've been knowing the day that they've been accepted.
No, and I... I should've caught that, too.
Except that it's amended. We're amending them and adding them to the document list for that set of minutes.
And the only...
For that set of minutes.
And the only reason we're doing it is 'cause we're retyping them to make them look nice. Otherwise, you turn them in with the pencil changes.
I mean, that was... That's certainly an easy mistake to make, but that's...
But it doesn't matter when they're approved, they go with the day.
They go with the... And they're the last thing on here, because they're the last document, right? So they're usually the last document.
So realistically, the last document could always be the draft, because it's a draft... And the final one is gonna be different anyway, so the last one cannot...
Even if there are no changes, the difference between draft and final makes sense to do.
Right, exactly.
It's just whether or not it's got an correction.
Good catch, I didn't know that.
Well, I was looking, and I said, "Eck, maybe I didn't listen to you," but I thought I really did want to do it.
So this one should say April 29th.
So you wanna go back and pull balls out of the folders that are there?
I'm thinking that the minutes we actually worked on in the given meeting have to stay in that folder too, because they were documents worked on in the meeting. So I think it's more a matter of making the second copy.
'Cause the reason we did it is so if anybody wanted to, they could look at the draft with the notes, because we don't see the final version, and that way, if there was a... Something happened with the, you know, the computer and the typing, so they can say, "No, no, that's not what it was," and we could fix it.
Although, what's there set up in here? I write in at the top, "The meeting it was accepted at." So somebody would look in that folder for the minutes, maybe? But it seems to me that it could be done either way, but if they're attached...
And we talked about putting "approved" at the end, because when it gets typed up with the approval, it gets on the web, somebody can see the approval, 'cause the content that you write on doesn't...
But they would see the date of the meeting, where those minutes were reviewed and discussed.
Yes.
And so the working copy should probably stay in that meeting folder.
Right, but I wanted to add the approval to the bottom of the minutes, like of April 29th, when it gets retyped, but "approved" at the end, because that's the copy that ends up on the web, where people can see it. You don't want them to have to go through multiple layers of minutes to find it.
But I just put it at the top, "approved," "as amended," whatever.
Or at the ending.
Because when it's in the legal book that Town Clerk keeps at, what people will see and look for quickly, there is the date that it was approved, and they might go to that folder.
Right.
Well, let me ask you a question, just... Maybe, I agree, that's what we decided they should go with, April 29th. But here we are, looking at April 29th, and I'm just thinking, maybe there's a flaw in the way we thought of that, because here we are, May 13th, going over the April 29th minutes. Surely, a copy of those should also be in the May 13th book of minutes and everything. But to put it on the document list of the actual meeting, we didn't have that document at that point in time. So I'm wondering, I'm kinda confused now. I talked myself into a circle a little bit, and maybe that was our directive initially, 'cause maybe my flaw...
I think the only reference needs to be that, just like this set of minutes, that we talked about the minutes and we approved them.
You mean in May 13th?
Well, you know, I mean, this one was talking about... Right, so tonight's minutes will say, you know, "We reviewed, amended, approved the draft of the minutes of April 29th."
Right.
And added that draft to the document list. I mean, that's all that needs to stay in tonight's minutes, I would think, to satisfy me.
I was just... I thought that the draft with the changes, we were heading to have it be with the final printed version as opposed to the next week's meeting where we looked at it, just because you're trying to keep it as a set, so to speak. Even though I think you're correct that maybe a copy of that is with tonight's minutes to say, "Yeah, I looked at this," but you like to follow the whole thing and say, "Oh, there's the final, but where's the draft?" And it gets very hard to follow.
Well, I'm just saying, as I understand it, given the way we're keeping documents in the folders, that the minutes, say tonight's minutes with the markings on, would stay in this folder, but we could take a copy of it and put it in the folder for the 29th as well.
I think what I was looking for is that just document list said there was such a thing. There is an April 29th draft minutes with corrections, and if we put a copy in that folder, people can find it if they want it. Otherwise, it's going... It's very interesting to try to find, should somebody say, "I want a copy of that draft."
Where would you put it?
It becomes a nightmare to find it.
Which document list is what we're trying to understand? Where would you put this one, what would work on that?
This one, we've got by hands right now. We attach this, just add it to the document list and attach it to the April 29th minutes.
That's what I thought we were gonna do, that's where I would... Even though I know we're talking about it tonight, otherwise it becomes very hard to find it.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, we're gonna attach how? It's not gonna be attached in Town Clerk's book, which is the legal book that is kept in.
It's gonna be on this document list.
It'll be on...
Be on the document.
On the documents, right, but not the corrected copy.
Right. No way.
'Cause you gotta be able to find it.
It has to be.
It has to be on... These minutes have to be, because they're on the agenda for today, so they have to be part of the document list for 13th. And we're gonna make the changes here, so they have to be part of the minutes of the 13th, as approved, as amended. So if you want it back, we're also on the April 29th, they're gonna have to just make two copies of it, right?
I think what we're trying to do is make sure there's a reference on the 29th, that we started with a draft and we made changes, and there's a record of those pencil changes in their original form. Most of the committees just make their changes on their printed document and file it, and we were just trying to make that neater copy, otherwise this would be the official thing.
I think that the draft, in my mind, this April 29th draft, will we amend it or correct it, or whatever we wanna do, and we will approve it with the corrections and amendments and attach this draft to the document list of the minutes of April 29th. And I think the only thing we need to do as far as the May 13th when we do it, is to say when we agreed to do that.
And then if underneath it said "approved," then you know what day it did all that.
Except it'll be on the front page.
We don't need this draft as part of the document list for tonight's meeting, 'cause we're putting it on the other document list, and all we need to do is refer to that when we accept the minutes.
Or... Because these minutes will be on for the 13th.
I think we do need to have the draft. The first time the minutes for this meeting come to this meeting, so a copy will have to stay in this folder.
Alright, so if we put the document list there, what if in parentheses, we say, "See, May 13th?" Then you can keep one copy, but there's a reference here. Where do you find that?
And since it's written at the top, "approved," and so I board meeting of the 13th, that directs people...
But that's not the copy that ends up out on the web. So nobody gets to see the approvals, and that's what I'm trying to get something onto this, so when it's standing, when she retypes it, it also ends up on the web, and they can see the approvals.
But you'll type it at the top, so that it works for the book and the web?
Approved.
So if I understand, just so I can get it straight in my head now, is that if you wanted access to the final minutes for the first time, you'll be able to go to the document list of the meeting you're looking for. The meeting you're looking for, which is April 29th. If you go right there, and there'll be something in parentheses, I don't care if it's part of the document list, but we're talking about the document list, that says, "Final approval minute in May 13th, discussed," or whatever, in May 13th folder, right? 'Cause that's when we took the action. But at least you have a cross-reference, and you could also put a copy in the April 29th. My only concern is, it's not anything you did on April 29th, so I'm in a lot of trouble by that. But it is a good idea, and I'll tell you why. When we had a lot of minutes missing, I could never figure out where we approved them, 'cause if they were five weeks later, you know, or something like that. So if you went to the night you're looking for, it'll tell you where you finally approved them, and then you can go into that folder and see all this stuff. So there is a logic to it. And if it's in parentheses, it gives it some credibility as something other than...
An exception.
An exception.
So we're off, we're on back?
I think we are.
We're on to the document list. Eight minutes, right? They're gonna appear, the draft's gonna appear.
'Cause it's not even part of May 13th. We're trying to get it included on the tail end of the document list for the 29th, if there was a draft and it has pencil changes, or pen changes, or whatever notes we made.
And I don't even care if it's not in the document list specifically, but had like asterisks in the footnote of that last page, as in, "These minutes were approved formally at the May 13th." Some reference to get us there.
Does he think you're wrong about this? Right?
Well, all it's doing is saying we referred to it, and it wasn't a document that we were doing.
I mean, I'll do it here, but... But if you're gonna go back to April 29th and pull out the document list for April 29th, you're gonna have to add to the document list that was already done. You know what I'm saying?
Which is what we're talking about doing going forward. My only concern...
You don't wanna worry about the...
My only concern with putting the document list formally is that it wasn't a document at that time. But if you put a note at the bottom of the page, "N O T E hyphen," the amended minutes for this day were approved in the May 13th meeting.
And that's where you find the draft with the pencil changes.
The approved draft.
And this started confusing enough, but everyone that's in the minutes book does always have written across the top the meeting that those minutes were accepted.
Yeah, that's a "approved," "as amended," etc.
Now, if maybe that there were some minutes that came to multiple meetings and never got approved, so it wouldn't be across the top?
So you're telling me these say across the top?
Always. "approved," "Select Board 51313."
There's quite a few in there that aren't, 'cause I remember going through the book, and what you ended with having to do is try to find the set of minutes that told you when they were approved. There's some older ones. I don't think ancient old, but anyway. I think you would wanna type it at the top and do something that would be helpful.
Usually does.
Okay. But you're right, there's gotta be some reference to this draft minutes.
I'm okay with...
Sometimes it's gotta work to find these things. It's an issue, you don't want somebody digging and digging.
So forward, backward, time. Try it and see, see if we can't make it work. Anything on these minutes?
I've got a couple of things, unless you want to get something?
No, I didn't. I got to it late, and I don't see anything now.
Okay. Under minutes, second sentence, "She feels the board is walking a fine line with the amount of detail." I think the word that's missing is "not being put into the minutes." I was concerned that we're not putting enough detail.
That's correct.
So not with the amount of detail not being put into the minutes. And on the last page... Let's see. Second sentence says, "Stated, the report distresses her and felt inappropriate to call it individuals." I think the second statement I made is that I said it was unprofessional, and then the third one, you got covered by needing in a positive way.
Where is that from?
After the second sentence, the last paragraph, I would insert my second statement was she stated it is unprofessional. I had three things that night that I felt very concerned about. And then the third one was about needing in a professional way.
Positive way.
Positive, excuse me.
I don't have any problem with those changes.
No, I don't either. But now I have six of the document lists. What's that gonna look like, so I can refer it into my eBrom here? What are we gonna do differently? Or is it gonna... I mean, it really should be either in parentheses or it should be a note outside of the document list, because it wasn't a document at that meeting, so I'm concerned.
So number six is okay, 'cause it...
Alright. Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, something at the end in parentheses that we had the draft for the 29th, and we made corrections and changes, 'cause we're trying to be able to find this amended...
We should figure, cut up on a simple phrase that can just be...
The day changed.
I don't know.
Why don't you say... I'm just writing something down real quickly here, and then let me hear you.
Draft with changes and everything?
These minutes were amended and were discussed and amended at the May 13th SD meeting, Select Board.
And you can be down a couple spaces underneath number six, you're thinking?
Yes.
In italics or something?
It's just something simple. Bottom of the page says, "Note, these minutes were discussed and amended at the May 13th Select Board meeting."
Great, sounds good.
In that way, we know we proved them somewhere. It is a good cross-reference, 'cause...
And we can put it at the end of every set of minutes.
That's right.
This is a standard policy, put it there, 'cause the odds are we're discussing.
And almost leave a blank.
And if we have to, we can just cross out amended, and we don't change it.
That's right.
So we'll also say on the front, "approved with corrections, Select Board 51313," and then we'll have that note back.
Maybe it needs to be "this draft," 'cause you noticed...
Yes. These draft minutes.
These draft minutes.
Were discussed and amended at the... For tonight, I'm gonna say, "May 13th Select Board meeting," but what Paulette's saying is, just put a blank there, and you can write in which meeting they were accepted at, and if they weren't amended, we can just put a line through it. So it's just a standard note, it's just on the minutes all the time.
Alright, sounds good.
So you get the proposed amendments for this meeting? For this set of minutes? Any other changes, corrections, discussion?
I'll make a motion that we accept them as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, aye? You have any? I'll take it.
Oh, aye, sorry.
Okay, review of town meeting. Everybody get the Town Clerk's report on the town meeting? Any comments and so forth? Any comments or questions, or...
Yeah, I have a question, we need to go. Just a general question, is what happens now with the process? There were... There are a number of things that changed. Job descriptions changed. Something went from hourly to salary. Some rates changed. Fire chief hasn't changed in his stipend. Police chief hasn't changed in their numbers. Something has to happen to both the budget form to reflect that the numbers have modified for the town meeting, and I would assume that we gotta talk to the Personnel Board, maybe invite them here to one of our meetings to find out where they are with their policies and all these other things, these job descriptions, you know, position descriptions.
Well, that's one of the other things we were gonna talk about regarding the business.
I didn't know what you were doing.
As far as the budget at the town meeting, the town account, and every time there's a warrant, it's like this, an expense report. I would expect, starting July 1st, you'll see all those job descriptions change and the amount of dollars, or the... That's right, it's the secret judge, remember? You know, I mean, we spent a couple of nights saying that, was that really the right title for that account and that sort of thing? So on July 1st, those accounts become what the town voted, not what we've historically had, so... Everything we did at Annual Town Meeting goes into effect July 1st. So that'll be reflected in the accounts and treasurer's books at that...
But this marriage budget form, which we'll start out next year with, right? Will that get updated too before...
Before, yes. Because... Because that has a column, what was voted at Annual Town Meeting.
Oh, it does.
And then it has a column, like, for special town meetings, you know, or extra...
So it'll start next year affecting what was voted at Town Meeting, and then there'll be adjustments, I presume of that.
It would be nice to get, I'm gonna say July 1st, or whatever date it is, when she starts the new year, before any monies are charged, any expenses occur, to get a copy of that, 'cause that's when it's fresh. All the numbers are there, there's no expenses.
Nice to check.
To check it before you start rolling along.
That could happen. I mean, do you make that happen?
She could start getting...
Like a budget spreadsheet?
Yeah.
That could be done tomorrow? I mean, we know...
I think so. And also means the warrant, workup, the expense, whatever they call the expense report, with no expenses charged too. So the advantage of that is you can look, it says year-to-date, and you see the police chief's money that was approved at the town meeting, since you don't have to do M I S, any corporate expenses.
And I don't know if that could be done tomorrow, because we're gonna encumber some lines as we get to the end of fiscal year.
I guess that's a good question.
But that would be last year.
From last year into next year. So the FY '14 clean budget won't really be ready till we get to the end of this fiscal.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
But when you encumber them, it'll stay in '13.
No. When you encumber it, when you're carrying it forward.
And only certain things can be encumbered, operating expenses.
So they let the money move forward?
Certain things can be whatever.
Okay, I'm with you.
That other meeting or something, they're freezing.
And I just realized, is that right? I forgot to bring some...
And there is on the agenda... And there are some that... And there are some that, um, I don't wanna say involving, but they move from year to year.
Yeah, like a wide carry.
But they can prepare one, you know, when you get to the end of, when you get to the end of the year, to be able to get something to do stuff.
I feel like it'll take a couple of weeks to get, should test it. I would hope it will only take a couple of weeks to get 13 books closed.
I mean, you know.
We wrote what we voted. I mean, if we can't, when we look at the expense report when it comes and we can't get a handle on that, maybe we can actually put an extra column in for what got carried forward as far as encumbrances and so forth. That would probably be as helpful as anything. Particularly the expense report we have now. You get slight, when they're looking at it on screen, you get slight and back and forth. If we add columns, it would help the work on the slide around. There's really not a column that I find comfortable to leave.
No.
Or you can get it so small that you can't, I hate to bring out my, my line was. So I guess the changes are pretty small.
I, maybe I misunderstood. I thought you were encumbering it. You were basically putting a reserve on the 13 money so you could pay it in 14, because you're not allowed to pay old money unless you encumber it. So it's like putting a reserve on, let's say, a hundred dollars in year 13 and you're gonna pay in 14. But that's if you paid off against 13, but you have to define those encumbrances, because otherwise when the book closes, that money's gone.
And like that encumbrance may not be the correct term, but there's, there's a number of accounts that you can carry over. I mean, the account that we carry over, the other... And...
With the teaching swimming.
Swimming. But that, that's a revolving.
And they move forward.
The one I always think that we had, that we always just got rolling over was the money for years that we put in to redo the part.
Oh.
Right? We put some money in that year and it gets...
Oh, yes.
Right, and that was something, that was an ongoing project that, I mean, that money for the town hall and firehouse, that very well would be money that we wrote. Carrying forward.
There's some others. I think encumbrances belong to the year you're encumbering.
It makes sense if they do.
Because you're trying to, you have to define that I know I've got a bill for a hundred dollars coming and it's 13 money.
Right.
And the only way we can spend it out of 13 is to encumber it. So when you pay it in 14, it really goes against the old money.
I think that makes sense.
Well, I'll tell you how, I'll tell you what it would be at the school, because the teacher contracts don't start until the first of September, so they have a little company money to carry. Because they're fiscal years, and it's the same as ours, so. That's... So, uh, is there any, not to jump around, but I will ask anyway. Going to liaison reports a little bit, has there been, in case there's been some feedback from the police department and the fire chief as far as what happened at the town meeting on that, and the police department got, got cut short and the fire chief got pushed ahead, I was afraid maybe that would create some undue friction. As liaison, I figured you probably would hear all about it.
I have not delivered it directly, but I have some time. I'm going to be in town in the morning this week, and I'll come down to see you to talk. So I did want to do that.
I know that Nina had a call in to the chief, because she's on the band, Nashville band, and they were going to do something for National Night Out. And the chief's response was, the cancer, it was a black hole decision. So, you know, I think decisions are being made to...
Well, they didn't add that to the budget.
But that was one of my questions to you was, we didn't have, I don't recall that discussion last year with the chief. But, you know, I'm not saying we should have had it, but I wanted to make sure that, that they realize they've got to make changes, obviously, because it's less money. And we don't, we're not given permission to go to special town meeting to get another five or six thousand dollars, right?
Because we kept the hours at 33, only just.
So I have to assume that like for fall festival or for things that are important that, that need budget point, and there might be some short weeks on hard time release.
And we put in an extra thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, for special events like fall festival or Memorial Day or whatever it's called. A thousand, and there was another thousand just in case he ended up with some issues to investigate like he did this year. So there were two of those that I think were in there.
But should we have a meeting with him soon, like in the next week or two?
Yeah.
To, to, to clarify that, that we look at his budget, say, a thousand dollars less. Not that we have any control over his budget, because he's a strong chief, but just to make it clear that he needs to live within that budget. Or is, is that implied? Are we getting, are we micromanaging?
Well, I think he's got, you know, we can say he's got five thousand dollars less, but he's got almost ten thousand dollars more than he had the prior year.
Is it about that? Even with the special town meeting?
No.
Oh, okay.
That's included the special town.
And I'm sorry because I missed the beginning of this conversation, but I believe last year wasn't the discussion that he should go ahead and then come back to a special town meeting for more?
Right.
And that's not the discussion that this board is having with him this time? And I, I think he may have thought that was sort of an expectation last year, so.
I feel probably all that, because I believe, I think he does have a pretty good flavor. Where does one go? I didn't notice that Diane left him there.
Oh, I didn't notice.
I did. Yes, I did. I did.
But I, to be honest, I thought that was, the way that all worked was fine. You know, I mean, town meeting is the final say of so many things. And everything, as far as I'm concerned, town meeting is the final, and I'm a little amazed on the reduction of the police department, how little discussion there was. It was really very little discussion. I thought in, in the finance committee, I mean, I thought it would go maybe on and on, but maybe some of it had to do with the absence of the chief. Maybe? All right. Anything else on that? Do you have anything to add to?
Are you still on liaison?
No, 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 I was, I'm jumping back and forth now. I'm on town meeting. I didn't know if there was something on that. See, that related to town meeting, so I said...
That's okay, that's okay. I didn't see anything else in there that, that we went through. The only other one was the fire chief. That change there was the, the other significant change.
Oh, I mean, that whole deal was pretty well orchestrated. I mean, there's no doubt that that was to stay within the scope of the, you know, that was... Somebody spent time putting quite good thought into that. No, it was fine, except at the very end there where I wasn't quite paying attention on that article that take you thirty thousand.
Well, we had a problem. We had two different warrants in front of us. We had the warrant that was posted and the working set you gave us was an old version, which is why that...
No, no, I just had, I just had the changes back. I got to the end and I hadn't put in free cash.
I had, and, and I should have had.
The wording is different.
And the wording is supposed to be different. You published the warrant.
I should have had.
For the articles, and then, and then what you all get is a motion version, and it just gives the motions and the talking points, so the wording was different there. But I should have had what you caught, that the thirty was from free cash.
Yeah. No, that was fine. I mean, I probably would have thought it myself. I just had something to eat, so it was... But hey, we got to two hundred, we got to two... Yeah, it was fine. You gave me a week. And, you know, was there any discussion at all on the two hundred thousand dollars going into stabilization?
No.
I don't remember that. I think we discussed it earlier in the meeting a couple of different times. But what a small crowd. I mean, I'm, I'm reading in the paper about some of these other towns. What is it? The town of Ware wants to take their warrant requirement to zero. So that, you know, town hall allows, I suppose, to vote in. But that was ridiculously small crowd. I mean, that...
How many?
Nobody should, certainly we shouldn't be proud of this. I think we started with less than seven, we certainly started with less than seventy.
Yeah, I've never seen.
Because there's no head count upstairs unless there was something going there.
No, there is actually. It's actually got up to seventy-two, I think.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, Town Clerk's always reaching over, and you're giving it to Town Clerk maybe, and then...
Is there any talk about changing the numbers of it?
There is, and I, I didn't put it on the, on the priority list for tonight because Town Clerk has been bringing up for a while, and what we said we would do here is, and we already started doing it, I've talked to some people, I know she's talked to some people, is taking a look at how the other towns are doing, and some are doing it nice. Many, most are doing it nice at this point. Some are doing it multiple nights. There's some variations. There's a question of separating the election from the annual town meeting, which I believe that Town Clerk is in favor of doing. There are probably pros and cons to that. So what we thought we'd do is do a kind of survey of the, the various possibilities, and then when that's ready, maybe get it on the agenda to talk to the board.
It'll take two years to change that.
Because yeah, some's in my thoughts, isn't it? Yeah. And they'll change.
And right, and so it, it's a process, but we're gonna start right now.
I mean, I've, I've never been in one of these other communities where they have them at night and then you split it up over a couple of weeks or whatever, and that, that just seems like that would be...
I mean, it gets disconnected.
I mean, once you get into the...
I mean, I think there are arguments all over the place, and there are a number of different possibilities. Roe is having bears tonight. Jen was in earlier and she said, thought it would take about three hours with more articles than we have. But they don't have the school on it. That's gonna be a separate special.
Is there anything?
It is a towns in Franklin County. Some have the election first, county afterwards, some have county first, election afterwards. Different things to consider anyways, and then maybe a couple are maybe just a seven.
In years past, what has the attendance been? Double? Hundred fifty?
Yeah, I've never seen it like this. Have you?
Maybe, maybe it's just in the last year.
I mean, Illinois, Ohio was the greater, I mean, in terms of costs.
And I was, I was very amazed that that passed on the ballot, but it was quite a majority as it did. I mean, that was...
What was the number?
I mean, finally, it's gonna be like that.
What was the number on the ballot? How many?
It was one seventeen to forty-four.
Forty-one, you're in the ballpark.
One, yeah.
But it was comfortable.
Yeah, it's very comfortable. So, um, I, I thought that was interesting.
Now, last year though, it wasn't enormously overpopulated either.
It's been getting, I've been going for thirty years, many people go in longer, but it's been getting slowly less. Some of it, maybe people haven't developed the habit, and fewer people who always had it, you know, to show up. I mean, so I was thinking is maybe more people are working out of town, and so Saturdays and Sundays are more of a problem for people than they used to be, when more people are based in town.
I noticed there was a big enough drop that I just had to blame it on too good weather.
But it was beautiful weather and that's, that always makes a difference.
And I was...
And no huge controversy.
And no, and no big races. There were not many, you know, there was one place, but there weren't a lot, and no big...
And it occurred to me that, Ron may have brought it up, should we have used the, the 911 to just put out and say, don't forget annual town meeting, whether that would have irritated or helped.
It was on the website all along, and we've talked a lot about how the website, you know, is the way to get people to see things.
Except for those who don't, can't.
Except for those who can't, but it was posted for, I think it was eleven days at the post office in front of town hall. It did go out early to the reporter, but because of some particular things with the reporter who usually grabs our stuff and comes in, it took a little while.
I think I thought it might be the Asheville news, the absolute blackout coverage in the Asheville news.
There was...
I think that, no, we'll put just above the banner, it's that town, annual town meeting, but inside there really wasn't that much, so. And that's a huge change for the council today.
Yeah, Sally liked to put all that stuff.
Say what's wrong about Sally, boy, she wanted to know what was going on, put it out there.
So nothing else, before we get to April of fourteen, we would probably, completely wanna think if there's something we can do to get it out there a little more, try to generate some interest in being there.
You know, I've always viewed that as my civic responsibility.
I was gonna say.
So it's one of these things that, when I talk to someone today and I said, I can see a town meeting, what were you doing? They said, oh, town meeting, you know, it's like, oh my God. You know, and those same people might not go to the website on a regular basis, though.
I'm getting it. That meeting has always been the first Saturday.
I know, you and Nina and, you know, a bunch of people.
It's been the first Saturday in May since it was the third Saturday in April, and before that it was...
Well, it doesn't hurt that.
And I know about some big things, but at least there's generally a history.
And I think the 911 thing, if there ever was another secondary good use of it, I mean, it hit upon all the people in town, you know.
Early in the week.
Yeah.
But I also had a lot of people say that the weather was...
Yeah. So what, she's the governor, but she had a time, it's your day, it's your vote.
I don't know.
So you're thinking that... See, you know, it's first April, you wanna get something out there, but that's when we're really getting into the meat of trying to figure out where everything is.
You don't have anything to put out except the egg?
Right.
Not a lot. Maybe a few key things, like the gray or the...
Right.
But you know, there wasn't even a big crowd of, of the parents on the school. I think back down to four.
Yeah. Do you think that had anything to do with the Congo church not having there much? I, I think some people look at that as a social affair enough to push them over the top and come, you know, and this year because it wasn't happening, maybe...
It didn't happen last year?
Oh, it didn't? I thought it was last year.
Is it only three years, Sammy?
I thought it was two. I mean, I, I'm disappointed. I don't, is it a... I'm disappointed that they didn't have one, but I don't know if that's a big...
Tribute to it, okay.
And, and let me just say this very quickly, that Town Clerk was bringing up and discussing her desire to separate town meeting and the election oh, a month before town meeting, so that, that is, her drive is based on some issues of her own as opposed to turnout.
And you know what always struck me odd was the election happens and it's out of sync with the fiscal year? Because that next Monday, if you were voted in, you're in and you start. It's not like you got voted in and come July 1, the new fiscal year, all the new people are in place, you kinda start immediately after annual town meeting. Don't mean, don't mean it's wrong, it just, it's immediate.
Maybe easier than starting at the beginning of the fiscal year, I don't know.
I don't know. It's kind of, I mean, you kinda slide in as things are winding down. Ooh, that could be, that could be. Ooh, that could be, that could be.
I really...
It just...
I think it would be interesting to see how a lot of change would go on Town Meeting. I mean, certainly something would be offered. The meeting change, I believe that all the meeting changes that we've had, I think if you look back, I think Asheville's always been the first Saturday of something, you know, first Saturday of March or, you know, whenever. But I think the changes in the last forty years or thirty years have been because of the regional school issue. Not being able to get their budget together because they don't know about state aids.
State budgets also.
Certain tie or that. So it would be kind of interesting to see Town Hall, they're changing because of something.
First week of June. Well, wouldn't we have more figures by then in terms of the school? Wouldn't that make a... If we stayed with our schedule, and we were prepared a month of the day.
I would think. Well, it's a possibility. I think it would give the state another opportunity to put off making their decisions.
Take the game. Plus, it would give you a shorter...
I don't know how much heat your town has.
To what rates changes before hitting the fiscal year. Plenty too short.
Well, all in all, I would say Town Meeting was a success, although I was disappointed about the ten dollars for town. Okay, old business. I didn't schedule any appointments tonight. Old business, the open meeting, that's this Wednesday. I'm gonna be at that meeting.
And we have...
I saw Paula and you planning on going.
Absolutely.
Do we have quite a few people from the letter that we sent out?
I have given the names of sixteen people.
Oh, great.
One or two may or may not be able to make it that night. Everybody replied. Everybody who's on the list at some point replied that they would go.
I wonder if we're gonna overpower them over the ten days?
We might.
You haven't had a feedback now?
Nope, they said thank you.
You know, that was being sponsored by the AG's office, so they can open, I think, and partition that room and put in what... They can organize the tables differently to accommodate more people.
I feel they're just not saying no on this one.
Right. I don't think they're... Yeah, because I remember once before she was saying something, we can put them in a different order. They can get more people in than that typical square they've done those few times we've been there.
They have another rule. They have different sessions. You know, you start, the speakers put swap. You have an hour.
Because I think the speaker's gonna be in the AG's office.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe Mark will come.
We'd have to...
Oh, it'd be different. Okay. All right. Any other old business or anybody wants to discuss while we're on that? I mean, we don't really have a wicked full agenda.
I think if anything, yes.
What do... Actually, so there's one thing that I have in the mail. It actually came in for the meeting that we canceled, and it is from Chief, so it could fit into...
Old business?
Old business, discussion of Town Meeting, or I could hold it for mail. All right.
That doesn't really forward it, does it?
I don't know. I can't remember if he forwarded it to everyone or not. Maybe you see that.
I think the last one I got from him was one of the eight, should come to Town Meeting or not.
So one is about reserves, but we're not at appointments yet, however, we could maybe... That's all right. And this one, I actually don't remember because I didn't know that. For the sixth, but then I went down and told them that it was canceled. It would come tonight. I don't know. I actually didn't put that again before the meeting. I'm sorry. Is it something appropriate for tonight?
I really think with the length of this and what he's talking about, I think you ought to email this to everybody or make copies so we can...
And put it on?
I mean, it's pretty lengthy and pretty... You probably should.
See it before. Maybe have the other copy forward. And then put it on for us.
Yeah, would you?
Yep.
And the others? Good for when we do the report.
So if we put it on, are we invited here to discuss what is in that letter or...
I think probably we should review what's in the letter.
Okay.
And wait for Paula to meet with them and report back to us.
I think I'd like the copy then.
We would then have...
Yes.
Another thing to go to the line folder. But...
So you'll get it...
I'll get it.
I'll send it to you.
Agenda.
And then at that moment, we can decide to have a handle.
Yes.
So not put them on the agenda for next week, I would recommend.
But put discussion of the letter on the agenda?
Yes.
And if you forward, we'll have time to ruminate on.
And I'll take a copy tonight so I can read it before.
Doesn't start out like something that would butcher the story. Anything else?
The truck was here.
Old business.
The new fire truck was here. That was old business from last year's annual meeting?
That was old business. It's nice. I'm trying to figure out in the first two days how many miles they put on it, because it went out Main Street and up Cape Street. God knows how many.
We have to make sure everything's working.
Right. So we need... I'll tell you what's old business is we need to... Like, that's a exact way. It's kind of a hard way to come to it, but we need to get something out so we can start advertising for used equipment. Things that need to be disposed of so we can get rid of those.
Because they were stripping everything they put on, the old truck, to put on the new truck.
Right. They were trying to stop it a little bit before it went for another ride, so everybody could run a chance.
So anything that was usable, they were taking off it and salvaging so that when the old truck left, it didn't have anything to... They might want to use on any of the trucks.
Or you may not have used. You may not have decent tires on it all the time. Guess who knows? But that's all right. So, do we wanna... Who do we want to folk? Do we want to just send a notice to department heads and so forth? That we're... You know, it's the time of year when we should be thinking about doing some square house cleaning?
Is there anything? Yep. And I know the other thing is they did get their new... Emergency manager director, director got it through one of his grants, so he got the new generator for over there that would run both the fire department here and the old one that's a little bit smaller was destined to leave there and go up to the highway garage so that if they lost power, they should be able to get it connected so they can at least get fuel.
And actually...
But it's not huge, though.
Doug Hill would like to go on the agenda for next week, just so he can tell you about the agenda and what the building will be able to do in an emergency. So that's another possible.
I would think that would be fine.
So are you going to send out something, Mary, that says something like pursuant to Article 28? If there's any unused equipment that the town needs to dispose of, please respond. Because that's what Article 28 is all about. It might give you kind of a key under door or something, right?
Do you want to say we're asking? And then we can ask all departments. Like, you probably want to ask everybody in Town Hall as well? I mean, I don't know about...
Yeah, I've talked to Laura. We do have some items already. We know some others that people do have, so I'll send out a call around.
I just feel like we don't do it now before we know it. Good excuse. I mean, if there's old fax machines or copiers or... God knows if there's an old refrigerator stuck somewhere, you know, I mean...
Whatever.
Where they're at.
Make a list and then decide how we're gonna bid it out or what we're doing with it?
Yeah, advertise and bid it out with the fire truck. There's no sense in that hanging around. Of the infill of gasoline, it probably doubles the value of it.
And I know Dell has something he's looking into with that old fire truck. Towns, a network of towns who either look for them or if there isn't a market for them, there's also a network of places that they can be sent where.
Well, it needs to discuss with the bucks. It's town equipment.
Yep.
So maybe they get recycled somebody else that can make use of it as opposed to it just gets chopped up or something.
That's all. I just know he's looking at that.
Ron, do you have anything?
No, I just always wonder about protocols and such. Mary, when we have a new truck, we have a replaced truck, does someone call the insurer and say, "We're canceling this" or taking this off the fleet and adding this to the...
I got it on before. This one was done, and I have the paperwork. Let me get it off.
Just wanted to... No, I'm fine.
Yeah, those are all the things I do.
All right. So at the two meetings before a Town Meeting, I think at both meetings I just mentioned about trying to brainstorm on how to prioritize what we would... Like, a short-term list and a long-term list, you know, things that... And I think when it comes to the long-term list of priorities, I think it would be good to get, you know, room with one member from different committees or commissions or department heads and that sort of, you know, just... I think in a lot of ways, if we got them all in one room together to talk to us and to talk to each other, they might get an idea of the bigger picture instead of just what their focus is.
I agree. I just think it would be fair to invite all members of the committees to come if they're interested and they've got the time. It gives everybody hearing similar information.
It's just a problem. I agree with you, Paula, but it's just a problem of appearances and meeting violation. Everyone would have one, but, you know, if they have a quorum, they say, "Oh, dang, we got a quorum." So if you invite the chairs only...
Or one spokesperson.
Or one spokesperson. I don't care. Then you don't have that... Or if they can assure us that there'd be less than a quorum there, I don't have a problem inviting more people.
They can host a meeting?
Yeah, but then we have ten meetings. It could...
They just gotta open a meeting so they can talk.
Well, they're not gonna deliberate.
No, but I mean, if they just wanted to be covered that they had one or more of them there and they're all talking.
I'm fine with whatever you decide to do.
The more inclusive you are, I just think it helps to get more people engaged. And we're talking about less attendance upstairs, so anytime you include more people, which is my help.
Yeah. Well, and I think it would be finally, certainly would be a helpful meeting. You know, I mean, it would be, you know, everybody should run over me, certainly an over me. And I really don't. I guess my vision of it is I wouldn't really think that even we would be doing very much deliberate. You know, it would be time for us just to hear what those volunteers, those committee people, those department heads have in mind as a longer-term deal.
Well, and it would be an opportunity to share. I mean, we've got some projects that have short-term goals and long-term goals. The dam, the wall, there's a number of those around that are gonna take more than a year or two.
Right. See, that's kind of in my short-term list of things that we need to work on. You know, I think this Town Hall firehouse deal is a long-term thing. You know, I think that's, you know, talk about the challenges of that, but...
Another one that's right parallel to what you're talking about is the tech committee. And where are they? They have a budget now, you know, and are we gonna... The connection and then the whole issue of the electronic media storage, which we talked about and deliberated about, trying to get where exactly, well, how's it gonna get to the lakes, you know, as Paul.
I mean, the last impression I had was the building committee's idea, get the basement cleaned out was gonna aid in getting the Town Hall offices wired.
Yeah.
So it's not just pulling an extension cord through a window type deal.
I'm almost seeing with my mind sort of a chart that looked a lot like the finance committee had where they were plugging in vehicles. Except there's a column for everybody, okay, this timeframe, we're looking at this, and I don't mean by months, but maybe six months or a year at a time to see how some of this stuff... Because Town Hall, this is a longer project. Maybe that's longer, some shorter ones. And when you get done, you've got this, gonna have to scroll to the right here to see it all now, to see what's going on with different groups and what they've got. I mean, I don't know what the park commission has left that they might be looking to do. I know there was more trees to be planted or something, but... And maybe that wasn't effective. Maybe that's true.
And it could be... You know, some of these projects, if they've got going, they've already got funding in place for it. You know, that's fine. If they can move it forward and get it done, that's great, but...
So are you thinking of all these groups coming to one meeting and like ten minutes per committee or five minutes per committee? Because we have a lot of committees.
That's pretty much what I was envisioning.
Or you could spread it out for two nights, but it wouldn't be so wrong to fill the place with all those volunteers, yeah.
Oh, it'd be great. I think it would be great. And I think, I think would it be? I guess what I was thinking is if we chose a time to do that, where it is to give them lots of notice and encourage them to have a meeting together before...
To set their objectives.
To set their objectives and then discuss it with us. Does that sound...
Sounds like a plan. So we should get a letter out and a big gift and all that stuff, right?
Well, that's a big thing.
No, we have different views on this. I'd still like to be inclusive, and there's many... If they want to bring a quorum, just make sure they post a meeting and then they don't have anything to worry about.
All right. I'm fine.
If only one wants to come represent a group, that's fine, too.
Yeah, well, if I...
At their discretion.
I mean, you're not gonna keep people...
Right. You're someone that you feel like they're not invited, I just think. So they can all come, they can send one.
I mean, I really...
Post a meeting if you're willing to.
I really think the thing to do is to encourage everyone's spokesperson. But everybody should be there. I mean, and if they want to post a meeting, that's fine. If they don't, that's fine. When do you think we can, or we should take a break here in the summer and go to every other week?
In the past, we did, recent past, I should say, we did it for July in August, every other week. I think we skipped the week of July 4th and then did every other.
July 4th is on Thursday this year.
Right. But it doesn't, I think the year we skipped July 4th, it maybe was on August.
Let's do it like July and August. Any meetings that would fall in there, or pushing that aside. Wouldn't be such a bad idea.
So next week's a warrant, the 20th. And then the 3rd and the 17th.
And then the beginning of July, right?
The 1st.
So have a meeting on July 1st. Don't have one for two weeks' worth.
Does that make sense?
I'm looking for the... So you're saying go with the 1st and then the other one?
After that. Yeah. And that, those would be one...
Takes you right into September.
Those would be warrant weeks.
Oh, right. That's what you were... Gotcha. Saying 1st and 3rd of July in August.
Right. It'd be the, you know, be July 1st, July 15th, July 21st. There'd be three meetings in July.
1st, 3rd.
1/15 and 21. And then August ends at the 12th and the 26th. And then August ends up the 12th and the 26th.
August. This would be the twel-, right, the 12th.
And the 26th.
And the 26th.
And then Monday, the 2nd of September is Labor Day, a holiday. And the 4th is Rash, Rashna, so maybe we skip that one and start again on the 9th? Or does? Yeah, that'd work, because the 9th can still be a warrant.
I won't be here on August 12th. 12th, the 26th, and then September, I mean, we have time to make that decision, but we'll probably have a meet on, on September 10th or Friday the 6th, if there's something to sign or get together to sign, you know, we can make a decision as we get closer to that September. How many Skittles are on the.
Is there something with September 9th, Monday the 9th, is that? Because that would have been when we.
The 2nd, the 7th, right, the 2nd is, the 2nd is Labor Day.
So the 9th we.
So anyway, get back to what we were originally discussing, how about if we have June 24th, then a meeting with everybody on June 24th? And that'll give them six weeks to, to have a committee meeting or, you know, to get together with.
Weird, no, 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 just, I'm thinking, well, it's not the best, but I'm thinking about things that happened last year at the end of the year when we met with the finance committee to move money around. And that happened sort of right at the end, I just don't remember if it was 30th or 40th, so we just wanna leave. Whether, whether we think we need that very last meeting in the year for that, or whether the 17th would be enough time to know we need to tend to money.
Hopefully, that's pretty quick, there are usually a few items.
Right, but if you go with people, you wanna be doing that as well, so that's all I'm throwing out, because that needs to fit in there somewhere.
I think we used to have 20 days from the end of the year to sort that out.
You can, you can start 60 days ahead, you usually wait a little while to see what's gonna take shape, and I think you can go a little bit beyond.
I mean, you can actually finish up, close the books on the year, like the 25th of July, I mean, that's the way it used to be.
No, I think that's right still.
I mean, I'm kind of a reason, I, that's an excellent point, Paulette, but I, I've been kind of watching the expense reports and I think from a special town meeting, we.
Too bad.
We don't know what's gonna happen, but.
No, I just remembered what was happening last year to the end.
But I, I think.
That an appointment's now fit on another day.
And the.
Reappointments, right.
I mean, if there's a few hundred dollars here or there, we can normally just send a note to the chairman of the finance committee and he can can figure and fill that money without. Holding court for dust.
I think that we just have to agree that's something we have to meet together. Right. Unless it's their own.
That's, those little things at the end, that they look at those as bait.
You've heard that before?
I've, I've said it before, I've said it, I've said it before, so.
June 24th for that meeting?
Yeah, and, and it'll be talking about long-term objectives or projects or those sorts of things that they're looking at, you know, things that'll be more than 12 months. Does that sound right?
Yeah, and I would say in that email too, that if you choose to, to have a meeting, you'll be responsible for posting that meeting well in advance, but if you don't, you have a quorum, you, you won't be able to deliver it. And.
And we want to, I would really like to limit, we'll have such a number, we really need delivery, to limit the discussion. Can't become a, you know, we'll go alphabetically or from seniority or.
So here's a question, are we talking about departments, boards, and committees, or just boards, boards and committees?
Some departments.
Departments, boards, and committees.
I think it's, I think that would be good for everybody to have a vision of what everybody's up against.
Maybe the wording is if, if they would have us, everybody's welcome, but if they would have a spokesperson for the topics they're interested.
That's what I put down, everybody welcome, one spokesperson for board or committee, that makes it organized, it means there's a lot.
Yeah, they're welcome, but we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be listening to everybody that comes.
And that, that means they organize ahead of time.
Yeah, that means you get organized.
But the thought is that you're gonna be posting our meeting, Mary, and if they end up with a quorum there, they, they didn't anticipate the meeting, they didn't post one, you have to also on your agenda say what boards are gonna be there, right? So you have to be careful a little bit with that, you can't just have a quorum, you show up.
I really think we just need to be asking, have it laid out, that we're gonna talk to committee A or department B or whoever it is and this is, and whoever's gonna speak, you know, Tom Poiseau's gonna speak through that.
It was like when we went to the finance committee, we could be there and if we had something to speak, we could speak. We couldn't deliberate amongst ourselves on any of the topics that.
No, we tried to all sit in the opposite corner.
Just to make it clear we weren't meeting, so.
Does that clear as mud?
It is.
Think we can get that out, so this week or very first part of next week, so we can.
This, end of this week or very first part of next week, I've probably got this week already, don't care.
That's fine, that's, it's gonna give them a good spell of time to get over.
Maybe I'm a bit lucky.
You know, I suppose. All right, so on, on short-term objectives. I, one thing that comes to mind that sounds like it's, it's on a timetable that we're either gonna have to take advantage of or not, is this electricity thing with the sewer commissioners.
With what?
The solar. Putting the lasso over the sun, I mean, it sounds, it sounds to me like.
So I've got, I've got copies of the contracts, do you want me to start by scanning those in and sending them to you? Or something else?
I think we need to have a meeting with the sewer commissioners to, to finalize what their position is, I mean, they, they've obviously seen these contracts that you have. Tell me how to proceed on this, but I, I think we need to decide if we're gonna get behind it or gonna fish or cut bait, one or the other.
And how much just for the sewer, or are we gonna commit for the town, it's up to you, because it's 20 years, or can you?
The sewer, the sewer plant knows it would like to do it. So the first question is, would the select board die for the sewer? And then while you're entertaining that, you can decide if you think it would make sense for the whole town or not.
And it would be nice to know, in my mind, if you could possibly commit for the sewer and defer, hold up for the town if you didn't wanna make that 20-year commitment for everything in town. And if you, if you defer, what happens when you commit the rest of the town a year later, let's say, or pick something?
You can't. It's a one-time, I believe, well, if we did the host.
My impression, this is part of their financing for the project, they gotta, they, they gotta get buyers signed up to buy the stuff as part of their whole deal, so I think, you know, they might be building another one next year somewhere, who knows? They were interested in us because, different fact, it's a big, relatively large electric buyer, waste water treatment plant, but small enough that it made sense to come to us as a host. And as part of that deal, they were willing to roll in a bunch of our other accounts to, even though they're small, relatively small.
Which by themselves would be of much interest. By themselves would be of much interest.
No, there's enough of them and there's relatively, together they're significant, but a bunch of accounts are more of a headache for them. That was the impression I got from talking to the guy, what the guy.
Would you say, your impression is that we have less than 60 days to decide this?
Yes. Yeah, if I may, sorry, but Vinnie said that she thought if we weren't ready by the end of June, that they would move on, they would start, at least the host off.
They, yeah, they, that's the way he made it sound, whether that was a bluff or not, I don't know, but the impression I had again was, they need to get this stuff all kind of lined up in order to do the, as part of their financing for building this system, so they can't dawdle on it.
This thing doesn't exist, so it's hard to imagine that if, unless they already have enough commitments to make this roll, that they it's hard to imagine they'd say, oh, sorry, you missed the end of June, so. I think they need enough players to make this work, or they're not gonna get to build it at all.
No, there will be polls in around 15th of July.
Yeah, there will be, they're, they're pretty much toward the end.
Yeah, the permitting's done, they're ready to build, is the impression I got.
Yeah, it's pretty close to the end.
You know where the malls are?
Yes.
You go behind, go between the malls.
Yeah.
And there's four corners right there. Take a left, takes you over to. Takes you exactly over towards.
The North Street, over to.
Athens football.
Yep.
But you're not gonna get that far, you're only gonna go up there probably a half a mile, and you'll see a piece of property, the Parsons Farm will be on your right. And you get just around the corner and on the left, you'll see probably a 60-acre parcel of land there, with a lot of ditches in it. And it's gonna be in between those ditches and so forth.
So it's not like it's open field.
With a great southern exposure. So it's, it's gonna be right there and I, their, their plan is that they're gonna have excavators in there the last two weeks of July. I mean, it's close. I think this whole thing has to do with the regulations to get their money, right? And Ashfield's a brave choice because we'll probably just get them over the threshold, but they don't have to give away too much money.
Yeah, and our total electric use will be like one 250th of what that thing's gonna produce, so we're, from that standpoint, we're a pretty minor factor.
They have, they, I figured they have a threshold to meet some state or federal guideline.
At, at this meeting, we're gonna wanna sewer commission, we also want the, the green communities group, probably, because they've done energy audits and such, townwide, sewer commission, you know, you know, usage and so on and so forth, so I, I would say, and you might wanna also.
Now, this isn't, this isn't the June 24th meeting, I'm saying.
No, no, I understand that.
We gotta get on that horse.
Right away. But you might also wanna representative, maybe the developer or the Hampshire, you know, that, that won't.
Axion could come for, and, or they.
I would vote for having Axion, because she was not very good at answering questions.
So we can get the guy from Axon.
Because philosophically, if I'm okay with this and the board's okay with it, then we have to turn it over to a legal counsel to make sure everything works, so the more people we can have at that initial meeting to answer the basic questions, the sooner we can move on.
Well, so a quick question is, should I run the, for example, the sample, which is pretty close, host contract by town council now, so we have a sense.
That is exactly my next question, how long is this contract, I mean, 20 pages?
Yeah. Might be, might be shorter, I've looked at it, I've read through it.
I definitely wanna see it before the meeting.
Well. Yeah, no, I haven't, I can scan me those, ever that too.
I would, I would think that we'd wanna copy, to me, 20 pages is more than I wanna see in an email. I definitely wanna see that paper.
I can maybe reach a copy next week.
Would you guys agree that?
We won't forget to get it sent out.
Send it to Donna.
I wanna see what she sees.
Would think I'm saying to her is something like, this is the initial stage, let us know.
I would, I would say that it's initial stage and we're very.
But we, anything to be concerned about, we may send it back to you right at the end.
We're very, we're very serious about, yes, it's not the final version, but we're very serious about making a decision on this.
Well, we're putting it on the fast track. It's not next six months, it's before the end of the fiscal year.
I mean, I think that way she can fly if there's any big concern and we can take it up in the meetings and then at the end she can just find that.
Because do I recall, we, we can only sign for three years, but it's a 20-year commitment, we sign for three years at a time?
We have authority to sign for more than three years.
Right.
That was what they meant. So it is, it's a, it's a, it's a burdensome decision. Gotta kind of make a, take a position and stand there.
And hold your nose and go. 20 years is a long time to, so.
Now, we can almost borrow money for a new car for 20 years.
So do you wanna set a date for this meeting, the short-term objective?
And like that. I'm assuming we're gonna take Memorial Day week off.
Do you want, are you gonna move our meeting?
Doesn't matter to me.
I would love to take that week off, because I'm just.
That's fine.
I mean, I'm just.
I'm up for skipping.
That's okay, I just.
Very thoughtful description of what my life is like this time of year.
That's okay, just, I was offering that if you wanted to move it to another day, it's fine by me.
So it's the next week?
June 3rd.
That gives it, those committees and boards enough time to allow us an exome to show up.
Exome, yeah.
I said Axion, that's tomorrow at the, I'm sorry, Axion.
Axion, yeah. Does that sound all right, June 3rd?
Sounds fine.
We just need to get all the players involved, that should give. Tell Donna I said not to spend a career on if you wanted to.
That's what I thought, I'd say it's a.
We don't need to be putting kids through college, this is the first time.
A quick look for anything we should pay attention to.
It's fine, yeah.
Personally, I'd leave that day very open too, so.
I really think that's about, I think that's really, if we can get that business taken care of, we will have really mowed quite a swath.
What are we going to do, if anything, in terms of, unless David Noel is coming back to us? He was talking about having a school committee, an Ashfield school committee, not the many, many of Mohawk, but something that, that's watching over sort of this.
That was, that was on my list, that's very good. We're all, we're all on the same page, I, 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 I think.
Do we invite him to go ahead and put something together and come to us, or? He was interested.
I know, he's very, you know, he's excellent, he's very good at it, I think at our level, and I, and I'm happy to do it, I think, I think somebody directly from our select board needs to approach Plankford, Buckland, and Holly. We gotta formalize something, we gotta, we gotta formalize a way to do this. And I think, I think.
That's all the text.
It's all we're talking about.
He was talking about, he was talking about, I thought, something bigger than that, that included some oversight of everything that's going on in terms of the schools, including Mohawk. Because the school committee members are different, there are Mohawk, because he was concerned about blessing and all that stuff.
Even though he loosely did kind of make it sound like that, he doesn't have the authority to do that, he, you know, those are all active officials and everything, so I, I think he meant. Even though it was kind of loosey-goosey.
Okay, and it is because.
He wants someone to stay on.
It's specifically tech because Board of Committee is actually the superintendent for that, but our school committee. but our school committee, people, our school committee to Mohawk District, not tech, so that's a little kind of area.
Whatever we get started, we good, so.
Along those lines, while we're talking about that, if you guys recall, probably three or four meetings ago, we had this discussion about Joe Jug wanting to set up a special ad hoc group of people, and you guys kind of pointed towards me, their opinion was that we're going to wait for all the town meetings to get done before they did that, so I'll report back to you when I hear from them, I have not heard from them in a month and a half, so it was, at the last meeting, agreed to what the town meetings should run their course, because there was very little we could do for those.
Right.
This is what I'm talking about, new version, so I'll report back.
It's been very interesting, you know, go back to our review of town meetings, how these other town meetings, or the select board, the finance committees, wanted to, to take that eighty grand out of the school, but there was absolutely no traction, that they couldn't get any traction at the town meetings.
Children.
They all got sacked.
Yeah. They've got approved this, this meeting.
So anyway, but we need to, we need to formalize something, and, and I think, I don't know if David spoke to me about it here, or spoke to us about it, or he spoke to me individually about it, is that, I thought he said it, I mean, is he really formalized something with the superintendent, I mean, we've got to. And there's got to be a way that this can be addressed without it officially, without it terminating.
Should be a right date, to one of our meetings, to nail this thing down a little better.
Well, there isn't a whole lot to nail down, unless we get cooperation from the other towns, and the other towns can really see a reason to buy into it.
Are you talking about VOTAP now?
I'm talking about the vocational transportation.
Have they buying into it, I thought they were.
Well, they are, but I, you know, they got to buy into it, it's going to be more than a six-week thing, I mean, somebody's got to be.
It's a buyout almost, or something like that.
See, I think it turns into a huge project for the towns individually to manage this. I think with a little bit of input, it is a very, very small task for the superintendent's office. Like he's saying here, it seems as though to require that David sent us an email from Michael one time, is that they just.
Now, you sent a letter, or made contact already with each of the towns, which opened the door, David knew to make contact. Now, he made contact for this year, but I thought he was also discussing with them to try and get next year, so do we just have him keep going on that, and, and, or do, do we really need another letter, or is that already moving?
Yeah, see, I, I think, I think the door's open, David seemed to tell me that he was, from some of the towns, he was feeling some resistance.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay.
And that maybe, a little grease could be applied to.
My only concern, throwing it back into the superintendent's office, is that, that was their charge initially, and it took David outside of that to do, to just pocket up and save the town a ton of money, so I, I, I kind of applaud the idea of a, either an ad hoc committee or a formal committee that keeps an eye on this VOTAP, transportation and tuitions and such, because we don't have really anything that's doing that.
It's hard for an ad hoc, you know, an ad hoc kind of committee, they can give them authority.
Right, they can, they could keep an eye, or maybe check in or something, but they can't be the hands on checking to see whose other bus routes, making changes if student rooms are, I mean.
But they did, I mean, David was an ad hoc guy, right? He wasn't a, he was recognized.
So I'm talking about in an ongoing way.
Why can't he do that, why, why did, it doesn't necessarily have to be a, a big deal, it could be every year, someone is appointed from each of these three towns.
Things don't necessarily stay the same during the year, either, we have people moving from one town to another. I guess my concern would be that it's ongoing, there can be changes at any time.
See, we're very fortunate, I think, when you roll back and look at it, we're very fortunate to have David Noel.
Oh, for sure.
Because he's got such a great background. Someday, we may not have David Noel, and, um, the other towns that we're talking about don't. So something needs to be kind of formalized, at some level, and I'm not exactly sure I would do it, because, I mean, David has, has an idea that, well, maybe we need to have, go back to an Ashfield school committee, you know, now we vote for Mohawk Trail school committee members, well, then if you have your own town school committee, you've got to have a minimum of three members, and you've got to, you know, then they have some authority on the school committee as far as divvying up money and so forth, so.
For the VOTAP. This just gets back.
I don't, I don't know, I mean, I, in my mind, when I spoke to him about it, what I envisioned was that there would be a third member, so we could have an Ashfield school committee, two of them would be delegates to the Mohawk Trail regional school, then a third member would be.
A delegate to the VOTAP.
Well, or we'd work with the other two, so they would have under state statute, have enough authority.
Isn't that three hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we just did in the budget, prehended on sending some money on busing next year?
Sure.
With the other towns, so there's been something they have worked out and agreed to, that it would seem good to keep in place, or even if they're only meeting once a quarter.
Well, absolutely, we want to keep it in place, but I've, and, and maybe this isn't a short-term objective, maybe this is a longer-term objective, but I think it's something that, as the players know, that there's something in place to manage it, and I don't know exactly what that is.
So what's in my David doing with our meetings, just as an individual, you know, not, not a member of finance or anything, but just as an individual, he seems to have his arms around, he's looking pretty nicely, he should try to.
Well, when I spoke to him, yes, I mean, David's great, but I had a twenty-minute discussion, and he threw out about seven different scenarios with a certain amount of detail, that I really wasn't able to, uh.
Something you need to hear more than once.
But I understand it sort of the way you do, that, that it would just round out the committee, the school committee, maybe in.
I got an idea, it would be a buyout change, you know, that'd be another thing.
Which does take about a year, to get through the.
Yeah, it's true, you turn, turn on the whole business, so, yeah. All right, what else would you have? Put a good track there.
I would, in terms of inviting David Noel, do we want to do that sooner rather than later? I don't know what's on the agenda for the twentieth of May, which is next week, maybe we've got a bunch of stuff, but.
No, we don't, I mean, I, I don't know.
It's going to take more than one go-round on this stuff, so it's like a.
We have a few minutes that we can take up, that very little, I mean, I have, I have a formally set to make it.
There are reasons.
I think we could, we could have David in town, I think a half hour would be enough.
Well, I was thinking, then if, if we thought that we needed to get in touch from a select or level back to these other towns, that would give us time still during the summer, because vacations, they go away, so it's going to, suddenly, you're in September, or whatever, so that's hard to express.
We may as well get David in on that, so, uh, warm on our mind, and finish up this year and move forward to next year. I mean, the way I look at David is, David's done great work, and it's kind of opened up the channel here, but I don't think we should just be always thinking that it's going to happen, it's always going to be David's the right.
And then at that same meeting, we should also invite our school committee members, I think, because if there's any interfacing.
I really don't think, I, there, there really isn't any interface.
Oh, so it's.
I mean, I, before next week, I will try to get fifteen minutes with Michael Bo McConney, just to tell him what we're working on, and see if he has any feedback.
I have, I have to check in with Paula and one of the other, um, administrative people anyway, so I'll just kind of.
Check with who, I'm sorry.
Uh, sorry, Paula, uh, Plainfield, the other administrative people, so.
Okay.
I can sort of just see where, where that sounds.
We've got two conversations going on, we've got the one about the vote, and then every now and then, we slip to the Ashfield school committee, that would have three members, and we've got kind of a short-term, long-term thing here.
Well, but, right, but it's all to do with the same, right, goal.
Right. Sure, he's available. So speaking to you.
Want to hear it first, then? Short term, I think the dam and the retaining wall, we've got to, that was, that, I was thinking, if it's nice on the twentieth, we'll, we'll do a future.
Do you want to go a little earlier? Do we, do we?
I was talking about the twentieth of May, so.
Right, no, that's what I meant, do we, do we need like a six, do our trip from six to seven, and then get back here for seven for any appointments and stuff?
I mean, if we're going to do something, we'd at least get started on it, and we get it, before we go to the dam, we really need to have Tommy involved.
Yeah, and we also want to just let Phil know, and, and, yeah, I haven't spoken to Phil at all, that is Phil, too, that's what I mean, again, that, as a member of life, for a second, but, um, there, there's some alternatives and, and options that I have already looked at, and perhaps we should just keep them amongst us for the first meeting, and then maybe, once you've seen it, then we'll move on. I have met with both the emergency manager and the highway super on, on the press, we've walked it, I've gotten their opinion, I welcome them to come, but I think if we, um, we've got to do a looksie first, I think that would open up our eyes completely.
So you could share with us what they told you, as we walk along the crest of the hill.
Absolutely, and it would help us.
Sure. Yeah, oh, absolutely.
And I think the retaining wall, you know, I really.
Not that.
I love that, have, has anybody spoken to the property owner?
Not the one on board to that, not yet, that, again, is something we should just kick around, I've got an option on that, too, that I've been playing with in my mind, and we can bring it up, you know, post it in a meeting and talk about it at that point in time, you know. And those center, without getting into too much detail, we, probably better not to get into too much detail, so I'll, I'll wait until we have a meeting, either go out there and talk about it then, or we can talk about it after, but it makes a big difference to see it first, you don't have to visualize what's going on. I would also suggest that, um, it's too big for me to send by email, but I have PDF of the dam report, and if you look at least at the executive summary, where they do short-term investments and long-term investments, the rest is just pictures and discussion and so on and so forth, it would be good to understand some of the expenses he's talking about in there.
I think those two things, and I kind of listed, I listed them under one objective, and to me, I, I would almost think we could get together on a Saturday morning, and, you know, if we picked a Saturday morning, and the weather was decent.
Sure, that's okay, too, I'm fine.
That would.
That would.
I'm waiting for that, too.
I mean, if we see a Saturday morning, and the weather's going to be gone.
The only thing I was thinking of is, if we do that, and we see it coming, I really think, in, just to protect ourselves, declare we're having a meeting, open our meeting later, walk along, because we'll be chatting back in.
No, we have, we have, we have posted it on Wednesday.
Right.
Right, we have to post that on Wednesday morning, right?
That is for.
Forty-eight hours, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You can't have Saturday or something.
So by end of day, Wednesday would give us time to, we could do it Saturday morning.
I think it's great to end it on a Saturday morning, actually, not to tie up the whole meeting here, and more people might be available to come walk you with us and talk you with us, and.
I think, I think we want the emergency manager, I think that would be good, to have the emergency manager, because there's a lot of proceedings and so forth already in, right, and the book for the emergency manager on the dam.
Yeah. He was, he was there with me, you know, it could be a longer meeting, the more people who might do that.
So just keep in mind that if, say, ten AM on Saturday, I have to post it by ten AM on Wednesday. Or Tuesday.
On Tuesday, we could do it like Tuesday evening. All right, well, I listed that as one, short, those two things, as one, short, we can do both of them.
Ten AM Wednesday, ten AM Thursday.
We got in there in an hour, I'm hopeful.
Because you can go over eight AM Saturday.
That's right, so you got to post by Wednesday.
But by the time you plan to meet on Wednesday?
Or before.
One thing, uh, probably, probably was me driving, right?
What?
I really think we need to look into the, uh, this town common. It looks like hell, and we've got to find out, you know, how the town accepted that property and what will, I mean, I don't know, they tied that sucker up so much, I think they were afraid I was going to put up a monument of Ronald Reagan or something, but, there's got to be something done with that, I mean, that's supposed to be kind of the pride of the town, you know.
And it was up until last year, I don't know if it happened to you.
Every argument is very well taken care of, but it certainly offered a mind with a lot of properties around here, there was something last year, I had heard it was Asian fescue beetle, other people said, no, it was animals looking for small things, everything got dug up, but they.
Something needs to be done.
I think, can't we just regrasp it?
Was there a contract we signed that has some stipulations in it, and then the other knows that is.
Yeah.
When on council?
No, I think the stipulations are when the town voted it, that they said, you know, you weren't going to put any fertilizer, you weren't going to put any pesticides, you weren't going to build any buildings, you weren't going to.
Let's look at it.
When we wanted, when the farmers market came and wanted to put a, I think, a table there for people to be able to sit at it, and they went to the farmers market, I called, uh, I looked up the agreement, I called the Franklin Land Trust, who holds the trust on it, and they said, fine, we just discussed it, they said, fine, so I would assume it's the, that would be the easiest way out.
I, I can, I can pull the deed, find, find the deed, I know the Franklin Land Trust holds a conservation easement on it, and so they have to have some sort of covenant with that conservation easement, I'll pull that, it's a matter of public record, get both of the registered deeds, I'll bring it to select board.
Well, we, we have it here.
We have it here?
Yeah.
Okay, so bring, uh, let's put down the agenda.
If there's something that can be done, that's.
I can, I can just call them and ask them if there's.
Oh, you have to be careful, because I've got it online there, and someone could answer the phone, whoever, and say, feel free to do what you want to do, but there could be something in the writing that we have to pay attention to, and just.
Right, I mean, when we did it before for that, we got an okay from them, you know, it's not just somebody picking up the phone, we get an okay from the Franklin Land Trust.
Or ask them what we can and can't do to improve the turf out there.
I think all we can do is, yeah, yeah, the way I remember it is that you could replace the trees that were there, but you couldn't add plantings or do those things.
And you couldn't put anything permanent, like a brazier, without approval, or whatever.
So now that it's been raining, and grass is getting rain sorted, is, does it, I didn't notice, but is it still that big, round, splotchy areas?
They may not be quite as big, but I walked up, they're big. They're big, but around the edges, the only thing that's coming in are the weeds.
Right. They create grass, huh?
It gets so much use that, I wish it had grass, he has enough.
No, I was just.
They get so much use that it's, um, it's going to turn to dirt pretty soon, you know, just because that's all thatch, and it, it needs something, it needs either some nutrient in it, or aeration, or something.
I don't, I don't.
Flock of hens.
I don't, I don't see that anybody else is going to take the lead on this.
I think there might have been a suggestion.
What was that?
Flock of hens.
Flock of hens.
I think it needs to be thatching, what seems to have happened to all.
They'll eat the bugs and fertilize.
They'll eat the bugs, they'll fertilize it, and they'll break up the fat.
Get them. Get them. So I just. Let's look at that and kind of come up with a plan.
Can I just call them and see if it's all right if we, uh, if we hire someone?
Well, Ron's volunteered to get out of here. I'm sure he would.
But I, I don't need to take Mary off that. If, if you wanna do that, I mean.
I'm just thinking the place to start might be pretty simple.
I guess I would like to understand the restrictions. I, I'd like to have a good understanding.
You have a copy of that. You should have official.
So, yeah, you wanna give them a call and then explain that to us next week when we do that?
With the.
Just see if it's simple. Might be as simple as hiring someone to do a little lawn care.
We can come up with that after we know what, what the rules are. Any more by conusions? Mary made a list here. I mean, we gotta get, um, the other thing on the list. I mean, maybe we'll take it to all this, we'll, this can be kind of a living garden. You know, we've gone through some more things. Certainly some more things will be, come to our way. I mean, I think that's a good start.
I think it's a great start. It's a real focus.
So, the other thing to add to this that we need to get started on is, and I thought that, that we need to take it up tonight in, in total. Um, but that according to uniform, you have that?
Yes, yes. Is that a joke from the first note?
You got a copy of that?
Yes, I have.
I mean, I think this arrived in February.
Yes.
And we got so deep into the budget, I didn't really know. Certainly didn't hurt. It's sitting in the file. So this was, this is the form. I mean, Paulette, you're quite into it with this being on the page.
Indeed.
So, um.
So there were many different things they looked at, many different discussions on what to do, comparing other things we had seen, trying to get it down to where the time you would spend for an employee is pretty much the top page. But the second page, most places, we saw allowed for the employee, if they felt they wanted to, they can write a comment. Because when you sign it, you're signing, not that you agree, but that you received the evaluation. And you always leave room for somebody to disagree. It doesn't happen that often, but yes.
Really left a lot of room for disagreement.
It, well, we had a whole page set up. We just used it. Um, and talked through the, the different characteristics there and tried to get them down so that you didn't spend hours and hours at this, but you could break them into categories. So that's how it comes out that way. Then to give it a rating, because people kind of, they like to know, where am I? In terms of that's why it's, you know, satisfactory is sort of the average in the middle, but then you've got good, you've got excellent. And you could fill the different boxes out with the employee or in some cases, depending, you know, people like to sit there with you. When you grade yourself together, you find you're on the same page or you disagree. And go through and with some numbers and some categories, people have a better sense of where they're at than if it's just all text. But we left room for explanations, because people do like to write something. It's nice. It gives you a place to put a compliment in some cases, to do a great job. So that was the theory we were working with behind that. And then the evaluation at the bottom, to have a place to sort of do a summary. And we've seen some that were more elaborate, took two, three pages, but it seemed like getting it down to one would be better to get the process going and to get it finalized for everybody. So everybody, because if it gets too glorious, nobody wants to do it. Even though they're important.
So page one is actually done by the supervisor and then to top over with the employee?
You could, you could, or you could be doing it with the employee. And different supervisors are different, so it might sit down and you're talking through and if I'm, you know, I say I'm excellent, you say I'm pretty unfair. We need to talk this through. Everybody think you're lacking, where you're succeeding, that kind of.
To, for me, I would say no one is excellent. The very, very best are only employees.
The time, we were just about finalized, I think I've mentioned this before, and Ricky actually took it and used it in her business. And when she did it, she sat with the people and found that pretty much everybody agreed where she thought where that thing, people do know for most cases where they're doing well, where they're not doing well. And that's how she tried it. So, um, but we could break, if the select board wanted to make sure everybody did it the same, we could certainly make a policy, like you said. You know, fill it out ahead of time. Maybe the employee fills out a copy and a supervisor, and you each look and see, you know, are they on the same page? And, and that could be something the board might want to weigh in on.
I, I did the forms right, because it's concise, it's not too complicated. It gives you, uh, an opportunity to, to verbalize, you know, explanations and so forth. Like you say, you know, you know, you're grading A, B, and C, you know, we really, you know, make it as flower as you want. I guess the only thing, and I, I believe Dave to her, was it at town meeting or was it at a meeting here? I think it was at town meeting. He was talking about, and I know you're working really hard, the first number was working really hard on the job descriptions.
Two things going.
But I don't, but I don't, right, but I don't see where, uh, any place where there's key parts of the job description that were addressed in the review. You know what? Key job description. I mean, everybody's gonna have a different job description.
Right.
So there should be a place where you're taking the key portions of that person's job descrip.
Keep going.
Job description that are being rated.
How would you deploy that in a standard form?
Yeah, it might have to be that there's gonna have to be a backside where you're gonna have to copy and paste what the supervisor thinks. So I just key parts of the job description, you know, and copy and paste those over. I don't, I don't. It's just, it's, it seems a shame to me to have so many people spending a lot of time and energy on job descriptions and the review policy and then not having work together. And somewhat.
You know what I'm saying?
And maybe that would be part of this huge portion on the second page, you know. Is, is those key.
But you get, be careful that you don't end up with performance plans, one per employee or one per job description.
I think the form, I think you could come up with a form and then if you're doing it beforehand, you say the supervisor should have the.
Copy of the job description.
Yeah, copy of the job description. But, um, ahead of time, you should be able to say, you know, there's twenty things on the job description. We're not gonna count the twentieth one, because that says all other duties and assignments assigned. But, uh, you know, pick out, even if there were three, you know, you could cut and paste those on and then, and then have a waiting for that. I mean, maybe I'm overthinking it, but I just would like a place where they work together.
What, what I've done is a little different, but I, I recommend, I have two comments on this. One is, I say at some point on the front page, and I think the front page is totally different than the last, last page. Last page, you're handing to the employee, but you might never get it back. Okay, this says that the, that the review went on, the data, the manager and the employee both signed it. If they have an issue with it, then this comes back and gets attached. That's my belief. But I said right up here with a note or something, position description, please attach. Because the very first thing I do is look, review the position description, usually without the employee, because I forget what's going on. And I say, oh, these are all their responsibilities, okay, and I understand their responsibilities, so I can now engage them. Cut and paste, that doesn't do much for me, you know, but I say, oh, so you're responsible for the, for this and that. And when was the last time you did this and that? Oh, I didn't know I was supposed to do this and that. So it's important for me to understand the position description. And then the other thing, and I think one page is great, because lengthy ones, if we have to do it, we'll go there, but, um, and on the very bottom, I always like to know the name of the document. So, so-and-so doc doc, you know, D O C X or what is the file, the electronic file?
Oh, oh.
Just so that.
Yeah.
We have it if we ever need to improve it or update it, it's referenced in the footer.
Yes, and that's something the personnel committee, working on this, is aware that when we get done, these things that are electronic have to be able to be moved along. You don't go back and say, oh, we can't find it, we start fresh.
Exactly.
So you like.
I just put the name of the document or Excel file in the footer.
Yep.
Uh, I think that's a good thing. I, I, I'm fine with it, but I do, before I begin, I just, I wanna know what the position descriptions are.
I mean, maybe that, that would, that would, uh, take care of my concern as far as, you know, if you got the doc, the.
Position description.
Position description. That document is attached right before you're gonna do a review. And then, um, and there is room for the supervisor to do, to, to pick out parts of, you know, accomplishments and achievements will be the things that, in the position description, that they do very well. Their goals might be to improve on, something, number eight, fourteen, and twelve. I guess that would probably be.
Okay, so what you're talking about at the top, position to add underneath like job title, position description, please attach, and then the document at the bottom, so you can find wherever it's stored. That makes sense. And we do the same for the second page as well.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, the way I do mine is, is I get in a quiet place and I sit on the computer and I fill it all out and then go over it with them and say, does this look all right? If it does, you know, we have a discussion about it. It works with the whole thing. Then I, we agree that it's fair and equitable, print it out, and they sign it. But everybody's gonna do it a little bit.
Well, and this, the, the intent would be to print these up so that people have them available to write on. Unless you wanted a copy that they could type into, but we weren't assuming that everybody was sitting there without a computer to print it out. Wouldn't, wouldn't the supervisors have the electronic copy and ask them to?
For five.
And want out or?
Well, the problem with that is to do this, you really need formware exposed and you go in here, you click on, on the checks and stuff. If you give them the word document, you might find that the actual form that was approved by the select board changed and developed by the personnel board.
So this is not something that supervisors can have on their computer and print out?
Well, I'm, I'm okay with it if they have formware and it's like a PDF or something.
Yeah, I didn't know about that formware. It wasn't the intent when we started it. It certainly had direction to move in if we thought everybody had it, but we were trying to make it so you didn't have to have a computer to sit with somebody. And one thought was maybe we're sitting here together, doing it together and marking it and writing on it or whatever. But we could look in that direction, but I thought to, to get it functioning so that it could be used, hopefully, get them, and then when do we want to make sure that everybody has completed the select board?
That's right.
Before September first, before August first? How soon do you want to ask everybody to do this?
See, I think that we need to, I think we need to invite the personnel board to a meeting, personally. I mean, Paulette's our liaison to know that she's on that board, but I'd like to thank them for everything they're doing. And I'd like to know, I'd like to, I think this should be on our short-term, long-term goal as far as get these position descriptions. I, I really haven't seen any that I've signed off on, and if other select board members have signed off, let's get them approved. Let's get, let's get them done as much as we can so we can engage the process.
And the process is pretty well along.
And, well, we've been working on the policies, that handbook, that's what it's. But then based on conversations in the past month, one of the members has been, went out and wrote to everybody, you know, send us whatever you have for job descriptions for your employees that you, that you think are what you're working from. And so that's all been collected together. For the most part, it looks like whatever we have that we think is current is what everybody thinks is current. When they were last approved and by what board, we can't always tell. I mean, I, I know the ones that we worked on that have been done when Ron and I or Doug and I and Norm were there, but other than that, I'm not sure.
Some we got.
Dave knows some of them, but then beyond that, some of them are dated. Two thousand and eight, you know. So they might all need to be revisited and updated for all we know, or they're perfectly.
Fine like that. But I think we should get them and get them back to the personnel board with signatures on them so that we, we put a stick in the ground, you know, stake in the ground and we move it forward.
And, um, is there any timetable as to when these job descriptions? You know, you can't do reviews without approving.
Right.
I mean, is there any timetable? Not that I'm holding you too much.
No, no, no. There, I mean, the, the policy manual is, is a big project, but this board said we'd like you to right now quickly switch the focus to make sure you bring us the latest of all those job descriptions so we can look it over and sign it and agree to them all, at least where they were for this year. Because we voted some changes, you know, at the annual town meeting. That's effective July one, so you don't really wanna be holding people to that for the review you're doing right now, but you certainly wanna get them changed for the next year.
Right.
So, we could make that switch and redirect the focus to sort those out, make sure you've got them all and bring them forward.
See, I'd be fine with Paulette with just creating, just handling it once. If, if it's adminis, executive administrator, for example, is come up with a position description, call it salary, you know, effective, you can say effective July first or whenever it is, and have it done so that we can just look at one document for every position description, be done with it. It's, it's not something I'd look forward to doing, but I think it's something really necessary and I think these are critical, you know, that we get them done. And so I would be a big advocate of getting those position descriptions done and authorized by us so that they can have the the weight that they're supposed to have for their evaluations. And I don't, I, I mean, I'm not gonna look at them at one meeting and sign them. I have to go and review them. It's gonna take a little bit of time, so it might be something we just put on a long-term or a short-term schedule.
The ones that are the most current would, would be executive administrator, and it just occurred to me as you're talking, maybe what we could do is just add to the end that says effective July one. At the annual town meeting, we go to these changes, you know, that kind of thing. But that one is current, the position that Lynn has is current. Dave was on the board when they did town clerk. So treasure work collector, whatever. Hurst is, has been in place for some time, so.
But we got higher rate people, we get.
And they, they all came in, so we could bring the latest of all of those forward.
And I think.
To the board.
Seems like one decision needs to be who, who's gonna do the review for?
Oh, the actual performance review.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. For sure.
So would I be too anxious to say that we'd like the job descriptions by September fifteenth? So we could complete performance evaluations in the month of, by December first? Would that be too ambitious a goal? Do you think that would be too ambitious a goal for the personnel board?
Hmm, no, that was a little further out than I thought you might say, but that's okay.
That's further out, okay. Well, I'm a pro for people on the personnel. Well, I would say that people on the personnel board need to take some time off.
In the summer, that's true. No, no, that's okay. And like this week's meeting, I'll bring up what we talked about so that if we're going to try to put some emphasis on the job descriptions and get them to the board. And then if we're only meeting every other week, you know, get them into our hands sooner rather than later. Because even if it's the latest job description, some of us may realize when we read it for somebody else that we have a authority that can possibly be that. I'll bet Tom keeps his up today, but I don't know about how many more. Tom, how many keeps his job descriptions for his employees up to date? And if not, maybe someone-
That last line that says all of the duties assigned by your supervisor.
So, sure. But I think we need to get them here a lot sooner so we can look them over. So that they're final by then.
Whatever's possible without pushing them too hard for the personnel board.
But I think, I, I, I would think if we did them in the month of December, you know, get them out of, you know, before December first, do them the month of November, try to get everybody to get their input, you know? But we need to get our ducks in a row and know what we're, I mean, we're gonna be asking some of the people to do evaluations that have never done them before.
That's correct.
And they'll need some coaching. It's a coaching opportunity.
So maybe December first is way too late, unless you've prepared them for it.
We would want it done by December first, so you prepare, you know? You know, certainly.
So by minute's time, I just want something, the board should have signed off that we agree all those job descriptions are what's happening for all the employees. So then from there, you could go forward with using it with a form to get them, and get them to turn it around.
See, my question to you is, okay, you have something that's building more and more, which we put some down. I think they also have their own money, there's some state money. Who, I don't even know what the hire fee is. Is there a head librarian that would do all the reviews and then the trustees would do the head librarian? You know, that, these are questions I have, you know?
I think.
I don't think we have one thing to say. I don't think the personnel board or anybody else has one whip to say about what goes on in the library.
Okay. Well, who's doing their reviews then?
The, the trustees do keep records of the job descriptions cause they've been sending those back. So that's probably something they can do. I'm, I'm not sure how many other employees report to the library. There's a lot of volunteers. So it's possible that the trustees would do everybody.
I think there's just a, I think there's just a librarian and a part-time assistant.
So the trustees would probably-
Maybe that's not what is happening.
Well, the only reason I say is, I'm the newest one here.
Right, you are.
And if there's a, if there's a paycheck that goes to those individuals with the town of Asheville, then theoretically, they're our employee and we have responsibilities in my bill too. That's why you, you do these things and it's all the way to the janitor of that structure. I don't know.
There are some funny exceptions. We, for instance, kind of check for the assessors clerk. But I don't think the select board or the personnel committee has anything to do with their employee choices or practices.
They would do their own.
Right, right. I mean, and I think that's the other thing that has to be, who does the evaluation? I mean, we, we don't have any authority to go and review jack.
So I was thinking of the library too. The library may fall into one of those.
Well, I'm not looking to get that. I just want to know who's doing it.
So that's something we have to, I think a lot of it, and, I mean, Tom would have to do everybody that reports to him.
And then we do Tom, probably, right? I mean, everyone should get a review.
Right. I mean, yeah, I'll, I mean, I think I told you this before. It's the one thing in my job that I look forward to at least.
Me too.
But that's actually when it's done, I say that, that would be a great, a great list of employee.
So actually, this part of what we, we don't wanna wait till September decide who's doing what reviews.
Right. No, you're misunderstanding me. The latest, I would wanna see the job descriptions and us to have a policy in place on doing the, the reviews. It would be the September fifteenth. Which would let us be able to get everybody else on board in the six weeks, in six weeks, right from the middle of September through October, then job reviews. And then all the job reviews, I would expect to be done prior to December first. So November is job review month.
So in my book, by September one, we here would have already figured out for all the employees who's reviewing whom. Because there's someone we're going to have to figure out who's doing it.
And we should have approved those position descriptions before that.
Right.
So not receive them on that day, but before that. It's a summertime thing, I think.
Right. They've got to come to this board in advance, so we've signed off and agreed. So if you wanna be at that point, September fifteen, that's not when they get here the first time. We've got to already have gone through them this, this, and who's signed off. I know the new ones, they printed up, they were leaving room at the bottom for a place for the select board to put down, the select board approved as of a date.
And I wanna do that on the old ones too. I mean, even if we, we approve them, let's get them on the table so that they-
Tag them all at one time, package it, done. This is the book.
Yeah, and then there'll be a binder.
Yeah, a binder. So we really don't need to take any action on this at this time. Take the action all at one time?
But I'll share the information.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, we can, the two changes you just mentioned, we can get those put onto here. I'll get that back to the meeting.
You guys are okay with those?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Good.
But I love to do that. So that gives us quite a little goal there.
Over the summer, huh?
It doesn't do much for us, but it does put burden on the personnel. But November, I can write down November, it is performance appraisal. Liaison reports. I have kind of a lengthy one. And to be honest, I'm probably cheating.
Over here.
From the highway department. I got a note, Tom and I have discussed this. He's updating us on his job search or his position search. So he had fourteen applicants and he and Alan Taylor reviewed the applications. And they just got six applicants to interview. So they both sat in and interviewed, of course. And, oh, he told me how they, you know, they came up with the point system and so on and so forth. It was good, it was very elaborate and this, but, uh, but he's, uh, they have one fellow that they're in full agreement on. So he would like to hire a fellow by the name of Fred Kramuski Jr. He was one applicant that had every, you know, fulfilled all the obligations that they asked for. I mean, he had the CDL, he had the Hoister's license, he had experience, uh, commercial driver's license.
So this is for the labor?
Labor truck driver. Okay. He's worked for Allstate Asphalt for maybe twenty years or so. They've had him on one of these crews that goes out and puts stone on roads and that sort of thing. And from my understanding is that there's just a tremendous number of weeks that he lives out of the suitcase and he doesn't wanna do that anymore. He actually lives in Conway, but it's right down on Warner Road, just, just over the line.
What's his name?
Kramuski. Kramuski. So he thinks he would be just great. And he would, he would like authority, let us authorize him to hire. What he wants to hire, I believe, for three months and twenty-five cents less. But he has absolutely no doubt that this gentleman would be-
So is he trying to use the three months as probation?
Sure.
Period. And then give him some?
Then take him up to the-
Evaluation, say, your job will ever end and we're adding on, give, any questions of that kind?
That's kind of where I would-
I know, if they're cold.
Well, and this was probably pretty much US town meeting performance of places. This fellow did actually know what his job description is before, but but he's close by, he's got lots of
I'm trying to read lips.
Oh, you can't hear me?
Oh, I can hear some kids. So let me ask the sticky question. Given we just had an annual town meeting,
Yes.
Given when we voted, there was 2% rate increase in there.
Yes.
Are we going to try to factor that in now? That what he would have been July 1 and back off for for the three months so that when we're done, he's somehow at the same place all the rest of the way?
I was, right, he gets after his three month or so probationary period, he'd be the same rate as since we don't have steps and
Right, it just, it would be different if he was coming in in September because the year would be in pledge. But not, he's going to come in and cross over fiscal year, that's what I was asking.
But he'll just have that 25% discount.
For a short time, for a short time. But off the soon to be rate as opposed to the current rate?
Tom is pretty anxious to fill this position. He'd like, he'd like to fill it, and I can understand why. I mean, it's supposed to be the highway superintendent at four, and right now it's the highway superintendent plus two because Richard Turnhurst is a
Is out.
So, and he does, he does have a part-time employee there.
And if this person's good, you don't want to get away, I think.
No, no, I think, so I'd be looking for a motion just so we can authorize a superintendent to because I don't know if this fellow's, I can't remember if he's working or he hasn't been called back yet. I think he hasn't been called back yet. So he can come to work right away, but if he did happen to get called back, he'd want to give two weeks' notice just like we want two weeks' notice, so.
So I move that we authorize to be the the highway department super to to proceed with an offer from the person they have selected.
By the name of Frank Muske, June 7. Any other discussion?
Yeah, help me a little bit, this is first employee that we've hired in that department while I'm here. Do we do any background checks? Do we know, and I'm not saying I'm a proponent of that, but let's say that there's the employee who has the litany of, I don't know, workman's comp claims. And you don't know that, and they walk in the door, and you haven't done any investigation. Say there's a substance abuse issue. Do we do anything or not at all?
Well, Tom has checked his references.
Oh, so he had references?
So he had, yes, he's had references, and his references came back very, very good.
Okay.
And since he does have a commercial driver's license.
Which we checked, right?
Right, and what he's going to have to do is protest and so forth.
On the D O T C.
And C D L, there's random, I don't know. Does town ever get a call for any random?
Oh, yeah, that one's got millions of them.
Yeah, you're supposed to get them, I think, annually, but I don't know. Upon my, I believe, and then, because that's a choice, a chance to reject.
See, I've never, yeah, I've never, I've never seen a C D L. I've never, I've never been called on random, but
He gets a lot of them, and actually twice, he had them right back to back.
Yeah, I didn't know if the town was in, I mean, C D L's on that.
That's why there's so many of those.
Okay. Okay, that's all, just wanted to So, any, that's it? I, I, I think they did a great job. I mean, I had a long discussion with Tom, and he just wants to So, all those in favor say aye. Aye, unanimous. Oh, snow assistance. Frontland County was part of a major disaster declaration for the snowstorm of February 8th and 9th. We should receive 75% of our eligible cost from FEMA, 12 and a half from M E M A, hopefully, maybe. At the applicant briefing, they said they were going to try to have the payments out before the end of the fiscal year. That may get us with a balance in one rose. Depending on how much you can sneak in there, so.
Some places were hit harder than others with that storm.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we were.
It hit as bad as some of the valid towns.
Yeah, it was more than that. And then, the last one, and the M I I A grant. We've been approved for a grant for $5,000 for an emergency trailer. So, uh
This is for all highway?
This is all highway, good.
Kind of a emergency trailer.
I mean, if you thought the fire truck got people excited, this emergency trailer would
Oh, there's pictures.
Oh, it would.
Oh. I should hold it up for Brian.
But it's got, it's got all The cones and so forth in it, you know, if there's an accident or they're working somewhere, they can hook up the you know, take the trailer out, and it has all their cones and sawhorses and signs and
Great.
Very exciting. But, to get it fully equipped, I believe everything is $5,700 for the trailer. Somebody says, we can either have them take out enough stuff to bring it down to $5,000. And I said, well, maybe if you don't want to take too much stuff out, you know, $700 out of machinery expense or something. I mean, it
Might as well.
May as well have it if you're going to have it. Is that, that sounds like, that, that sounds like correct direction on that?
Got some budget money in there that he can somehow use for that.
Well, yeah.
Is the intent?
Yeah, if you have a general Because we put machinery expense in there. I mean, it's up to you. I mean, if there's something like, I don't know, some trampoline or something, you're supposed to catch parts of the space station on, we're probably going to need that.
Yeah, is that something that you want to leave as coffee or?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, apparently we're talking about this, I suppose. All right. Anything, that's all I have for liaisons on reports. Call what, do you have?
Nothing other than what we talked about before. And I will for next week, see the chief.
Okay, you're welcome. Ron?
Yeah, I do have something small, but when do we discuss liaisons? Liaison sites, does that happen in July? Does that happen?
That's what I had in my mind, is that we probably would take that up.
I think it was an emergency that I got, what's your, what's the recent history?
I can't remember.
If we did that. We had some discussion when I first joined, so it was around now.
Right, and we did, we decided who was going to do what, and then when Tom joined us, we moved it again, so sometime in the next month or so, we should
Okay, because I intentionally kind of dropped the ball on the town meeting staff because I thought tonight we were going to be switching, and I was under the impression we were going to be revolving, that
We'll be rotating.
Rotating, and last year we kind of did a pared-down approach, you know. Looking forward to seeing what we do this year, so.
So maybe do it sometime in May? Oh, without too many meetings.
Not too many meetings, and we kind of got next week pretty well sewn up, and that's Memorial Day.
Okay, so I'll stay with the town, Ron, and until otherwise, but we should get it done, and it shouldn't, it doesn't need to take a lot of time either. This is
I guess when I think about the liaisons, I also think about all these committee appointments and so
Yep.
And the reappointments, and I'm thinking that's a little bit bigger thing because you've got to kind of talk to people to see if they still want to do it, and if you don't, you've got to meet them.
That's a good purpose for the liaison.
Until they say yes, and then
Tell her to help with that, she sent out another last year's Yeah, go take a look at the And if we're going to have the last week in June tied up for that big meeting, we probably want to do it like the 17th, if we could. Instead of, I mean, last year we got to the bitter end, I think. So maybe we need to let her know that we're heading towards
To Trump's tomorrow.
A different date to get it done.
Yeah, we need to get it done.
Had to squeeze it in last minute for last year. Before the year.
Could it be, and if it didn't get squeezed in?
You need to do it before the year comes technically.
The world will still, that's good. No, I know, it's got to be done sometime, so why not get it done? So I think, right, Ron, you have something, you've got to
Just, just the food, yeah, not, not a big deal, so you pick one of those and pass them down, like, give them two copies.
Two copies today.
I don't need one, yeah. This represented just some documents in two different meetings, I went through on the second. One was the inspection program over at FERC. And that, basically, the top page is the agenda for that day. The second page is the minutes as approved, and the third page is that financial situation there. And they're hopeful that they can hit the expectations, they're just coming into construction season now, and things are looking good, they're a little bit behind, but doing a pretty good job. The second handout there is, I went to a council meeting, which is a separate meeting. A council meeting is, you know, kind of the representatives from each town, and last year we had Mary assigned as our liaison, and I was an alternate. Mary couldn't make it this time, so I it was right after my inspection program, I never even realized that when I come, that usually it's the same people that go to those meetings. And that was interesting, I've never been to one of those before. And it was very enlightening, and that's their annual report as it relates to Ashfield. That is that colored thing, and it's pretty informative, I read through it, and so a lot of information there, and it's it's, I keep learning more and more new things about FERC that I didn't know a year ago, so
You do realize we're in the picture?
What's that?
You found us?
I did, yeah, you were in the picture.
Well, and you're right next to me.
Oh, in my room.
Yeah, but you
Oh, yeah, that went off, yeah.
A lot of hair or no hair, that's it, she made up from what I watched.
Well, only that I knew you were sitting in my bed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But an interesting sidebar on that whole thing is she made a comment, and I'm going to say Phoebe Walker, because there, at that council meeting, they talked about town participation more than they talked about that at the inspection program. The inspection program's talking about permits and permit fees and, you know, day-to-day activities and things like that. But she said something very interesting, she said, "We did an analysis on participation from towns, actual people coming to meetings, and Ashfield was at the top of it, so that's goodos for us, you know, that's, that's a good thing."
That's better than
You mean those special sessions they're running?
Yeah, must have been, she said.
Yeah, we could put, I mean
We have that.
Be in there when there was more than
Finally, people and stuff like that, so that, that was a good thing, I was, I was pretty pleased to see that. And it's, 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 it's good. I encourage everyone's participation.
This is good.
If, if, when it comes up this year, I, I might want to plug into that place in a different way. And if someone else wanted to be a representative to the inspection program, I'd really encourage that. Just because I think we need to all be involved at different levels, I really think it's a good thing. So, that is all my
Interesting report. I really didn't expect us to be going this late tonight.
I have a question. It doesn't really fit into any of these categories, but I'm liaison is as good as anything. When I was signing the warrants, I noticed an item. And the item I noticed was a phone call to town council on April 10th, and had Ron's name, but I presume he probably talked to you, and it was a reference to the Ashville House, so I just thought one of both of you might catch me up to snuff as to what we were concerned about.
On April 10th.
I need help, I can't.
I'm trying to remember. It, it was just a, I mean, she didn't have a lot there, it just said, "Call from Ron, refer to Ashville House, April 10th." And it was town council, and I thought, ooh, what, what did we need to know, or clarify or something?
I'd have to ask her, I can't remember off the top of my head.
I remember, I remember being
I remember
I remember asking if it was okay, and I remember asking.
I remember being asked.
She'd be able to remember.
I can get that if you just give me a second. Why, why don't you ask her, Mary, to find out first?
How good?
It seems like so long ago, it was only a month.
It was right after we had the meeting with Kachina, so the Ashville House had been on Monday, and I didn't know it was related to that, which is why I was
I don't even remember the Ash, discussing anything about the Ash lives. I'm wondering if it was an error in her
I was wondering if it was an error in her notation as well. Because I don't
Or it was two different topics.
Give me a second, let me reflect a little bit more.
Comes to my mind that it had something to do with FERC and building inspecting. I thought it had because, no?
Not that I would go. Not that I would
Oh, I feel like it's, um, just
It was something so simple.
Yeah.
Well, can, can you get back to it? Get back to it?
I just, I agree that it was first shaking you to send an email, but I thought, well, it must be something if we had to ask the question.
No, I needed to ask the question, and I I asked if, asked Mary to see if I could have permission to do that, and she connected with you, I guess. And later told me I could, so I have to get back, I doesn't, doesn't ring a bell.
Can you just?
I know, Mark, I'm sure you have that information.
Yeah, yeah, I will.
You could just
I think, was it about jobs or anything, was it about?
Say it again?
Was it about jobs or anything?
Jobs?
Yeah, job descriptions or I, I can't remember, I should have just asked.
You'll have to ask.
You know, it's only in voice, anyway, it just caught my eyes, so I asked.
Doesn't give you enough information, it's just
No, it's not, yeah, they don't make it too elaborate
Oh, and I do know
They don't want to specify anything.
Was there anyone else that day, because I know I've seen
I don't think so.
Items where
It was just one thing.
You have to figure out which it was for who, because it might have been
Just one, just one thing.
No, okay.
Okay.
Here's, here's a topic we've got to figure out on how to address, it needs to be addressed that came just before town meeting. So it gets set aside, but we really need to make some contact. We had a letter from Sheri Jordan. She had a complaint with an interaction with one of the town employees. And I'm trying to figure out
It's from the 29th. I'm visiting the background yields.
So, I'm trying to figure out the correct way, the first thing that comes to my mind is, I didn't think in my mind, the letter made it clear to me exactly what happened or how it happened. I would, I would like to reach out to Sheri and invite her to a meeting so she can discuss it with us before any of us approach the other town employee.
Can it be discussed in an open meeting if it's about an employee?
Yeah, I, there's a complaint procedure in the, in the manual, very clearly described that we can get in a world of trouble by dealing with complaints improperly. And, but there is some latitude in that thing, too. It gives the authority to to individuals of the select board to find out if there's a frivolous complaint, and not to and when I say frivolous, I just mean it doesn't require executive session. And then there's this whole concept of executive session, and if you choose to have a public meeting, that person has to be notified so that they have a chance to defend themselves. It's, it's pretty, I mean, it's as much in
So what happens if somebody just walked into the meeting, wanted to complain about somebody? You can't, you, you The person in the public can't just can't walk in and
Their ability to complain and our ability to respond are different. The same, what you're getting at, somebody raises their hand and says, da, 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 da. We, our response to that has to be controlled based on
Right. That's a good way
That is, I, I think that's probably the difference. Would probably say we have to take that under advisement and figure out what we can, cannot do, and what we can and cannot respond to. Because I
Well, you guys got the same letter I did, what, what's the direction?
This was from the 29th.
Personally, what I would do, and this isn't just me speaking off the top of my head, is I would say one, it should just, I, I didn't see that as a complaint that needs to rise to a certain level. I, I saw that as just a concerned citizen, and the way that citizen is treated, that we, you could say we, we do reach out to that individual and connect and respond to that person, and let them know that we have reached out to them, you know, and let it, let it lie there. Or you could go to executive session, or open meeting, a public meeting, where people have a chance to do it.
I mean, if, if I think a lot of it depends on how this board would like to have it handled. I mean, you know, you, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind reaching out to Sheri.
Or reaching out to Sheri and the person who's being complained against.
Right, right, and just, and just try to handle it that way, or
And if it needs, if it needs to get risen to the next level, then we rise it to the next level.
Somebody has to make a decision on that.
Let me
I think when it comes to talking to employees, talking to Sheri is easy. It's, but when it comes to talking to employees on something perceived as job performance, some things are categorized that you have to do in public, and other things, if you're in some way, I'll say that, lack of a better word, then that's when you can go to executive session. But I know some of the stuff on job performance, that, that if it's for the board, it has to all be done in an open meeting. So
For job performance?
Right, you're doing the whole board. So if, if that was going to lead to a conversation of job performance, I think we need to be very careful because if there's anything in there that could be something when you want, then be perceived as reprimanding somebody, that's the part where you need to be very careful in terms of the executive session.
Can I read this, because this really sheds a lot of light on it.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not trying to raise the level of concern, but it seems a reasonable approach. And it's just three or four small paragraphs. Sometimes handling of complaints involves nothing more than lending the sympathetic ear. Returning phone calls properly and listening patiently can often prevent and mind a complaint from escalating into a lawsuit against a town. At other times, a person's problem may be solved with a quick call to the right town official or town employee. When problems cannot be solved by the town's citizens, when problems cannot be solved by the town, citizens should be informed immediately and directed to another source. Then it goes on, it says, "More troublesome are the complaints about specific town officials or employees. It is important to have a written board policy for dealing with complaints about individuals to ensure that everyone is treated fairly." First, the board should make its policy not to consider this type of complaint at an open meeting until it has been discussed with a party directly concerned and a preliminary investigation has been conducted. This gives the board a chance to weed out the frivolous complaints. If the complaint requires further action, no complaint or criticism should be put before the board of selection until the party or parties complaining against have been given prior notice, and they say accorded, but I think it's supposed to be afforded an opportunity to present and to give their side of the story. This is the only way to avoid the appearance of a serial drama being played out before the board and the media. It all seems kind of like, when I read this, it's, yeah, that makes sense. You know, something that can be handled with a phone call and quiet it down, it's always the best thing to do. If, if it can be dealt, if it's a legitimate complaint, needs to get to the next level, then we need to kind of have a little policy here, it doesn't have to be complicated, as to how we're going to handle that. And then go to that next level, and so on and so forth. But it seems reasonable what they're saying, it really does. And if a person wants to stand up in a, in public comment period and make a complaint, you can't necessarily control that. But if we say, yeah, we, we hear it, that's unreasonable, we'll get back to you on that, if we take a side or a position, we could be in trouble with it. And we'll just say, thank you for your comment, and move on.
So let's go back to this particular situation. I mean, I, I feel bad for Sheri that, that no one's gotten back to her yet. And, I mean, just because it came, I believe it was the day before town meeting.
The only existing personnel policy or handbook is the one that exists right now, vintage 2008, that we're working on updating.
Almost, actually.
Almost. Twenty years. It occurs to me that there might be a section in there
Just a second.
I'm just talking about the old personnel policy manual. There might be this section in there that has something that we need to know about. And I have a copy of that, so I should have a quick look. There, okay, you have, but it occurs to me to take a look in there to see if there's something in there in terms of employees doing this. Which is different in terms of talking, getting back to Sheri versus anything following that, that we deal with the employee. So maybe it's two steps. And you're asking about the first one? I'll wait for Ron.
No, I'm asking about
To, to
I mean, at some point, at some point you know, you decide, is it is it something the whole board has to take up, or is it
Right.
Just something that something needs to be mentioned?
Right.
That's it.
But your first concern right now, you're saying that you were feeling bad, nobody got
Well, yeah.
There's another one, though, that was a letter from somebody, a town citizen.
Which one was that? The one from Lenny?
Yes. And that
Lenny didn't seem, Lenny, Lenny didn't seem too bothered by it, I mean, wanted his tax relief when he came in two weeks ago, yeah. Didn't seem to be too bothered until
I don't know all the details, we go later.
Yeah. I mean, we can take them up, I mean, it's a good time to talk about how we want to follow this. I don't relish, I don't relish doing it, but I don't mind it, neither.
You know, sometimes people love to tell you they're upset about something. Maybe, a difference is when they take the time to actually write it to you. Usually people, like, something, and more upset about it, unobvious.
They have a few, something like that.
Oh, yeah, that was something we said we wanted to talk about together. Be assessed. Just want to take the assessors. Somebody else, something about the.
See assessors?
Yes, that for Sherri.
We have a piece of tape over the urinal that's, when I went down there, it's like flooding the men's room.
Oh.
It's a sticky valve, I hammered on it with my fist and got it to come off, but we need to say, do not use, and look at town steward, whoever maintains that stuff, know that.
So that's your point of information. So, what policy do we want? And you, Paul, that brought up that, you know, there's another old complaint that's sitting in there that did raise to very high level with me. But it certainly is the same idea, I mean, we should come up with some type of policy. And I mean, if, if, when these complaints come in between meetings, if you, if you want me to, to reach out to talk to these people and, and, you know, try to assess what, if anything, needs to be done.
I think, I think something like that should happen, because they can't be discussed here, obviously. And if we all got the letters, it's very difficult, because you can't discuss it publicly. You have to go into executive session, so it would always make sense that some designated hitter, or whatever, you know, goes and, I didn't mean it the way it sounded, but explores the situation and see if it can be diffused and, or we go into executive session. I mean, we should have a policy, absolutely, I agree. We should have something. Otherwise, we go into executive session for everything, come out of executive session.
Here's, here's another flavor, it might sound like make work, so if you don't like it, that's fine, but. I wonder if part of this is to send a, an email or a letter, depending what it is, back to the person that at least first acknowledges, we are in receipt of your correspondence, whatever, and we will get back to you, which then gives us some time, because not always. Can you get on it immediately, but you can always send a quick answer that says, we want you to know, we have your letter, we'll be looking into it, we'll be getting back to you. And it gives you a little time, and they're not feeling ignored.
I think that's a great idea.
Now, with your permission, I can do that when I see one of those come in. I haven't stepped into that in any way. That certainly could be a regular response.
Well, I was wondering if, like, this one that came that night, I, I think we just didn't deal with it that night, but we could have said, okay, Mary, would you please send a letter and we'll get back to this?
See, my issue with that is.
So that it, in case we decide we're gonna do something right away, we don't need to send a letter that says, then the next day we do something?
My concern, I agree with the fact that you should know that a person is complaining, something has risen to a concerned level of theirs, that seems like the appropriate thing to do is to say, we've received it, we'll get back to you. But if it becomes bound to the minutes of that meeting, and it's part of a document list and everything else, then there's some disclosure requirements, too, and it becomes public in another way, you know what I'm saying? Whereas if a one-sided email without deliberation from the chair said, because it's possible that, I didn't get this letter, I know I did, but it's possible just one letter went to the chair, or to the executive minister. And the chair says, I am in receipt of this, here's the PDF, please do not respond, and I will assess the situation, or I will, you know, somehow it's gotta get in there so that it's not necessarily part of a meeting, because then you have disclosure requirements. It's a catch point, too, it really is. And I think a policy is the most important thing to do, that we should have a policy. Because I can recall complaints that have occurred in the not-too-distant past, that I was wondering, what's gonna happen, you know, what's gonna happen? And I'd ask Mary, is anything happening? And I wouldn't necessarily get a response, but I didn't want to bring it up in a public meeting because we're constrained by the way we do it. But I think a policy is very important. We should, we should, this situation at hand, we've got to deal with, but I think going forward, there should be something happening so that it becomes more of an automatic process.
Something like the vice chair handles all. Handles all the flights.
I think different ones of us can handle it in different ways. I really do. I don't think it always has to be the chair.
I agree, I agree with that.
I really think, you might have a better way with someone, you might know someone personally.
Yeah, but at some point, somebody's gotta wink and nod to decide who's gonna take care of it.
Right, you have to have the full position if you're not gonna bring it up at a meeting, you have to have.
And the fault, and just hope to. And that's difficult, because there are these things happening that aren't documented, that's not good.
It is.
No, but what you document is you know that the chair, or the vice chair, whatever it is, will respond initially.
Or assign.
And see if it needs to go.
I don't care if someone says, here, deal with this and see if we can diffuse the situation and make everybody happy. And if, if I get assigned, that's part of my job. You know, I don't care with the person, if it's a, if it's a worker, they live on my street, I happen to know them, and I might have a better stroke with them. Or if it's a town employee and I'm the liaison, I can try that. And what I would do then is say, um, that, you see, the response becomes an important thing, too, because the wink, nod thing, that makes an action start to happen, say, it becomes diffused. If it's diffused, then, then the issue should go away, but there should be some knowledge that has gone away and just hasn't fallen, fallen off the cliff. You know, sometimes people don't do this. And if it needs to go to the next level, I mean, that, that's another response. So there's gotta be some sort of protocol there.
I guess one quick thing I'd say is whenever letters come in, they do go into the personnel files. But that's not much, but just in terms of what happens.
And it seems, I know the first one came from Lenny. We didn't at that time, but we could have, because you weren't there yet. We could have agreed, said, okay, one of us will send a note to Lenny, tell him we've received this, we'll get back to you. It seems to me good that, that they come to the, I worry about default things that just happen. But like this one here, I don't think there's anything wrong to say, we receive correspondence and somebody's gonna reply. It doesn't have to be more detailed than that.
Okay.
I would, they would.
I would think if, if we're respecting the procedural manual, then that letter complaint wouldn't be in a public meeting folder, you know, but we have, it goes into the employees folder. And then we say, we've received correspondence from so-and-so, and then who's gonna deal with that? And we refer to it as that person always, and, but we don't, it's not public information. That letter should be publicly available. See, that's what I was trying to do, because we're told that it should, complaints have to be handled very carefully. So how do, that's my issue with that. How can you then even do?
Well, but when they send complaints that are copied to everybody but the Wall Street Journal.
Right.
I, I, I don't know how you can't have that part of the public record.
This only went to the three of us, right? This piece of one.
To my knowledge, I don't.
But I mean, there's so many correspondence that, you know, it's just huge. But talking about complaints, I mean, yeah, I mean, this one in particular is, is just the three of us. So, how are we gonna handle it? I mean, if we could set up a policy or a procedure, you know, that this is the way it's gonna be.
You say this is existing procedure?
I, they're maybe in the, uh, policy book that we've worked with until we get the, the current existing employee policy.
But that has to do with, that has to do with handling with employees, not so much handling with a complaint handler.
Right. And that's what I was separating the two things, that talking to the person who wrote the letter is different. Talking to the person that.
Personnel boards, well, personnel board, have them write a policy for this. I mean, we get two select board members there, and we have people who are very qualified to, to give us guidance. Ultimately, we have to prove it, you know, but this is.
Well, but we may have one that we're operating under as regards the employee.
No, but employees are different. If there's a, if there's a complaint from an employee initiated by.
No, and also against an employee.
Oh, well, if we do, we should work with an existing procedure.
I can, I can work tomorrow and scale it up to you all.
It's ten minutes after ten, and we're not doing a budget. So I, I am just gonna ask you if you think it's appropriate in this situation that we're talking about, that I reach out and try to have a further discussion with Sherri so we can decide at what level this needs to go.
I'm fine with that.
At a different day, we might have sent.
Every situation.
A letter, but I think this came two weeks ago, right just before the, the budget cycle. So I was gonna say, if it was different, we might have volunteered for one of us to even be the one to send the letter. This is, you know, from a member of the board.
Do you feel this is appropriate, what I'm suggesting?
To have you reach out and talk to her.
And I'd apologize, too, for the board saying, we're sorry, we'll look back to your.
Given you only have so much time in your day as well, and knowing it might take a bit, I'm not opposed to, but would you like a note to go out? Like, should I write a note quickly and nail it that says, Sherri, we received this, you know, we'll get back to you, so advise you to hold time?
I, I have my cellphone and I have Bluetooth came.
Okay, all right. I'm just, just offering.
For a letter, I really do have a few.
Legit letter, yeah.
But I think we should, from a protocol point, if you send a letter also, even if it gets there after your phone call, that just says, we're in receipt of that, and we should get, that shouldn't happen all the time.
I think that should be, I think that should be a policy, but I don't know if I have the energy and we've really thought about it enough to know exactly how that's gonna work tonight.
No, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
But can we take some action tonight that says at least that we'll come back, or, no, I didn't mean that situation, but how we're gonna deal with it in the future?
Well, I'll find the, what's in the policy book now, scan it, email it to all.
And you don't need to email, just bring it to the next.
Or bring it to the next meeting.
So we can go forward on this sort of stuff. That'd be great.
That'd be a great thing to nail, try to nail that.
And if it, if it doesn't exist, maybe we go to the personnel board and.
I mean, it's gonna be hard to come up with something that fits everything.
I know there are sections in there, I know the new sections we've been working through are a little more elaborate than, than the old section. It doesn't change anything, but it just kind of tries to clarify in more outline form than.
I think that's great. We need that. And the whole section, we need a policy on that, so it's good.
Yeah, but I think it would be best not to have it happening by default, just because a letter comes. Because I think just talking to them like we did tonight, we might say, okay, so, if it was only sent to the three of us, maybe one of us is sending a letter out just to say, okay, we're in receipt, and we can have a template thing that we can do. And it comes from one of us, it's like, we'll get back to you. And it gives us some time, so people don't feel bored. I think that's.
That's a good point.
That's a good point.
Anything else?
So you'll let us know if we need to go into executive session.
Uh-huh.
And if you don't hear anything, we'll assume it was taken care of. And I don't have any issue, by the way, with anyone opening my email, not my email, my mail. This comes in an envelope here, and you see something like that, I, I think we should get back to that person as soon as we possibly can with the complaint.
Do you have anything else, Paul?
No, I'm just looking here to see if, the only public left is.
Yeah, I'm trying, yeah, he's been doing something else, so I'm not even gonna ask him.
He might have something he wanted to share, inviting all. These are the ways of life.
Do you have anything to share, Brian? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Ten fifteen, we're all done. Let's hope we don't get too cold.